One moment, everyone. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is your regular scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, January 25th, 2021. And the time is 6:02 PM, and I am calling this meeting to order. There are no scheduled hearings. Public input, as always, can be provided using the following methods. Contacting our office, Board of Selectmen@dyton-ma.gov, calling the number listed on the agenda, or, as always, via Zoom, using the link, meeting ID, and passcode on the agenda. This meeting, excuse me, is being audio and video recorded, and it will be accessible on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel for later viewing. And it will also be replayed on Channel 9 on the regular schedule. With that, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Selectmen Goulart, you're on mute, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, since our last meeting, we lost a number of residents. Maria Barboza, Elaine Barrow, Janice McClellan, and Jose Ricardo, and in their memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and as always, our condolences to their family and friends.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this Mrs. Barboza the lady that was the oldest resident?
Yes, it is.
Oh, no!
She was made aware that she was getting divorced in post-Cane, just before she passed, but that is her.
Oh, my goodness, what a shame.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Selectmen Pacheco, we were just discussing this, the Boston Post-Cane, literally the other day, and how excited she would be to get it, so I'm so sorry for Mrs. Barboza and her family. This evening, under schedule, actually, before we get into scheduled appointments, I just want to take a roll call, even though I know everyone's here. Selectmen Goulart, present. Selectmen Pacheco.
Present.
Selectmen Zagrafos, present. And tonight, we have our scheduled appointment, and our first appointment is really, honestly, a discussion. Mr. Lynch, I know is here, hello, Mr. Lynch.
Good evening.
I'm just pulling up my agenda, everyone, I apologize. And we're going to review, discuss, and act on appointing a new town administrator. I want to throw this open to my colleagues. Mr. Lynch, before I do, was there any remarks that you wanted to make?
No, I don't have any remarks. I thought that the interviews went very well. I thought that the questions by the board were excellent, really delved into the major issues that we were told were the issues that Dayton was looking at. I thought the candidates all did well in responding to those. We tried to get you good, strong candidates, and certainly based on the feedback we've received to date from the board, the board feels, seems to feel that we have some good candidates, and I would concur. I hope that we were able to provide you enough information about them through their, obviously, through their work, so their resumes, their couple of letters, but also the essay questions that we assigned to them, the reference work that we did, that you have a good sense of these three candidates, and that you are ready to have a fruitful discussion tonight and ultimately a vote. So happy to be here to answer any specific questions or general questions that board members may have.
Thank you, sir, as always. And just for the public, folks are constantly trying to get into the meeting, so that's what I'm doing. I'm not distracted, I promise. I want to throw this over just to my colleagues, and whoever wants to start off can take the floor.
I'll start off. Mr. Lynch, again, I want to thank you for giving us those three excellent candidates. It was a difficult choice, but after reviewing all the comments that were made, the questions that were answered, their resumes, their essay answers, I'm supporting Mike Mullin. I think he's an excellent candidate. He has a lot of experience with writing grants. He has a lot of experience regarding finance. And I was impressed, I have to admit, I was impressed with the fact that he came to our food bank the week before last when we had the food bank. And that he's also attended a special town meeting in November, as well as attended some of our Board of Selectmen's meetings via Zoom. So he is the candidate that I'm supporting.
Thank you, sir. Selectmen Goulart?
Um, as I said the other night, just like when we interviewed for fire chief, I think these were good candidates. It was a difficult decision. But also, the person that stands out in my mind is Mike Mullin. I didn't know him, I didn't meet him when he came to Town Hall. I met the other candidates, didn't know either of them either. But in looking at Mr. Mullin's presentation to us relative to how he answered questions and things, I was impressed with how he's had to deal with some, I'll say, tough situations as a selectman. I think being a selectman is a plus. Obviously, not every town administrator would have that kind of experience, but I think it was important. I think that he will be a good fit for Dayton. So again, I am supporting Mike Mullin.
Thank you so much, Selectmen Goulart. And I want to reiterate that I think we all took the weekend to really reflect on the really important decision that we are here to make tonight. And our job, of course, is to make difficult decisions, but this one is in particular very difficult, of course, especially when the candidates are all qualified, are all engaging, and have a lot of tools to offer and bring to our town in particular. And so I guess the point of me saying that is to say that I'm not piggybacking off my colleagues. I arrived at my decision completely independent as well, just reviewing the interviews, going over the written statements and essay responses that the candidates provided, which, again, were good and were very thorough and detailed by all candidates. But for me in particular, I did feel like one candidate spoke to me, and that candidate was also Mr. Mike Mullin. I'm not making my decision tonight based on anyone's negatives or perceived negatives or weaknesses or perceived weaknesses as candidates. For me, Mr. Mullin spoke to me in the type of caring, compassionate, competent leadership that we've been fortunate to have in Dayton, and I do think that he will continue to provide that. I did want to make one aside, and again, all the candidates were great. Mr. Mullin's response regarding the issues he's had to overcome in his professional career, in his life as a public servant, really spoke to me. And I think the number-one quality, or at least one of the most important qualities that we should have in a town administrator, is someone who's resilient. Someone who, even when things don't go your way, or things aren't perfect, things aren't handed to you perfectly, he demonstrated to me, not just in that response, but in most of his responses, that he's someone who can adapt, he's someone who can grow. And I really just think in my heart of hearts that he is the best individual to help lead our town, to continue to lead our town well into the future. So I'm also going to be supporting Mike Mullin. And I guess I just wanted to say to my colleagues how nice it is that we all came to the same agreement completely independently, meaning agreeing on the same candidate, not knowing, obviously, who would support whom tonight. And it's just really reinforcing to me to see that we're all on the same professional page, so I did want to say that as well.
That's what I meant when I said, wow, the first round, we were all in agreement.
We were. And we didn't think about it. We didn't think about it that night.
Taking time over the weekend, I think, was the best possible way to do this, because as each of us asked questions, on each resume, I wrote answers, so I could match all three responses to the questions. And it was a good refresher to go back. I didn't watch the meetings again, because I figured the fastest way would be to read the notes that I wrote. And so, yeah, I agree. You know, I'm happy that we all came up with the same candidate.
I agree. And of course, I will, in a moment, entertain motions. And, Mr. Lynch, correct me if I'm wrong, everything, of course, as always, you know, is contingent upon a successful negotiation.
Correct.
That being said, Selectmen Pacheco, I'll give you the floor. If you don't want to make any further statements, I will also entertain motions, sir.
No, I don't, I have nothing else to say about it. I did wish that we had the opportunity to speak to each other. We didn't, clearly. But I'm so impressed that we all came up with the same conclusion. Mr. Mullin, as we all know, has big shoes to fill. And Mallory's up here, and I think that Mr. Mullin can be up, Mullin can be up there also. This is probably one of our biggest decisions, I know that I'm going to be making on this board, because this is something that's going to impact the town for years to come. But I do think that we all made the right decision, so. Mr. Woods?
Sorry. It's very timely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectmen Goulart?
I make a motion that we appoint Michael Mullin, our next town administrator.
Pending a satisfactory contract, yes, I'll second that motion.
Yes.
We have a second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? And I'll do it differently going forward. Selectmen Pacheco, roll call.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos, aye. So congratulations to Mr. Mullin. Hope he didn't change his mind. Just kidding.
Watching the meeting, and he's very excited, so, very appreciative, so.
We look forward to working with him very, very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectmen Goulart?
But just a comment to Mr. Lynch. Is it possible for the board to get a list of names of the applicants and who the nine were that you had to, you know, you whittled it down? Just names and, you know, the process. The other thing I would say to you, the one part of the process that I thought was problematic, the recommendations were all anonymous. That wasn't the case with our previous town administrator. And I personally think it's important that if you are going to recommend somebody, you put a name with it. I know when I went to the university, I had to have five recommendations, and I had to have three letters. And that's how strong they felt about people making recommendations. So the only thing I would say is, if we were just starting this out again, I would say, please don't give us anonymous recommendations. I think it's, again, I think it's important. We knew who the recommendations were for the candidates that we interviewed the last time. And when you know some of them, it gives you confidence in the decision you're going to make, because if you know and respect that person, you pay attention to what they're saying. So that's my only comment.
And thank you, and I appreciate the feedback on that. There is, a couple of things. The, with regards to the nine, all of the candidates were provided the promise of confidentiality unless they became a finalist. Some of them were currently employed, and therefore, if I give the names out to you, then they become public.
Okay.
Particularly now, at this point, where they know they're not in it at all.
Okay.
With regards to the references, the reason we do that, and we've done it both ways, but the reason we do that is because we have candidates, we have references that have indicated to us that if their name is going to be there, they would like to limit what they tell us. In your particular case, the candidates, I believe, everything was positive. But we have had situations in the past where it's less than positive for the candidates, or they tell us something about the candidates that might not be, that's something that they want to bring out to us. So by promising them some confidentiality, we're able to provide that, as opposed to just a letter of recommendation. But, you know, one thing, if you look at the, over the seven years that we've been doing this, our process has changed, evolved, and I think it's much better now than it was before. And given your feedback tonight, we'll review that again and see how we do that so that we can get both aspects, both the positive and the names that you could attach to it. So I will, I will certainly, I appreciate the feedback on that, that's very helpful.
Thank you. And I'm only basing that on experience here with hiring a town administrator, but also Dr. Zee and I were involved with hiring a fire chief. We were involved with the actual process at all. It was a fire chief who volunteered to do this for the town of Dayton at no cost, did a super job, came in with 10 names, but we, like I say, I just felt knowing who made recommendations gave me more confidence in the decision that I had to make and how I based it. So that was my only thought.
Oh, and again, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did want to read, you know, I guess it's a biased comment, but because the person knows Mr. Mullin, but we'll read it. It is public input and relevant to this. Mark Norris said Dayton has made a great, great choice for its next town administrator. Mike was not only a colleague of mine on the Rockland School Committee for several years, he's also become a friend. Mike will give, Michael will give his heart and soul to your town. Michael is also a great husband and dad. Good luck, Dayton, and my friend, Mike Mullin. So thank you, Mr. Norris.
I will, I will reach out to all of the candidates and extend their, our, you know, the board's appreciation for them applying.
Absolutely.
And then with regards to the contract, should I tell Mike that he should await a call from you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can, we will. I will reach out to him about this, you know, tomorrow.
Okay, and I'm here as a resource for you beyond this, you know, moving forward. But in particular, with regards to this contract, as you go through this, if you need some, any, if you have any questions about anything related to this, you know my number, so you could certainly give me a call, and we can, I'd be happy to sort of help, help with this process.
We'll definitely be in touch, and you have been a wealth of knowledge and a really, really invaluable resource during this process, Mr. Lynch. So I just wanted to thank not only you, but Community Paradigm Associates as well for all their help.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with the Town of Dayton, and hopefully, we'll be staying in touch and have an opportunity to work together again in the future. So thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch, please express our thanks and appreciation to the other two candidates, and let them know that this wasn't an easy decision, and we really did take the time to go through all of the data that was submitted and the questions and answers. So we appreciate, you know, meeting with them and having a chance to interview them.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Good night.
And of course, congratulations again to our new town administrator, Mr. Mike Mullin. And with that, he's probably on the call, so I apologize if you are, Mr. Mullin. Next is a 6:30 PM appointment with Mr. Mello of the Conservation Commission. And I know Mr. Hashem is also here, and Attorney Costa is also here to open us up, so we're all on the same playing field in terms of our facts before we begin our discussion. Since we have about eight minutes, Selectmen Pacheco, I think we have enough time to do scheduled announcements. Do you mind?
I think so.
Thank you, sir.
Schedule announcements. Town Hall, Old Town Hall are closed to the public. All in-person meetings are canceled. All committee meetings shall be held remotely via Zoom. All council on aging, primetime, and library programs that are currently scheduled at Old Town Hall will be canceled until further notice. The library will still offer curbside service. Payments or any correspondence can be left either in the outside drop box located by the walkway at the entrance to Town Hall or the one in front of Old Town Hall. Payments may also be made by mail and online via the town website, signage will be placed at all playgrounds, and I believe the signage is there. Signage will be placed at all playgrounds, basketball courts, and the track behind Town Hall. Inform the public that the use of masks is mandatory. There may be a $500 fine for noncompliance. There will be no changes to trash pickup or recycling this week. There is a town-wide parking ban in effect through April 1st, 2021. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. The annual town election will be held April 10th, 2021, at the Dayton Elementary School from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The Town of Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on February 20th, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, Low Level, and it is a drive-through. Hannaford's Helps Reusable Bag Program. I'm a member of the Inner Office of the Dayton Historic Society, so I want everybody to be made aware of that. The Dayton Historic Society will receive a $1 donation when you buy a $2.50 reusable community bag at the Hannaford located in Town, Mass. During the month of January, 2021.
Very nice. And what, can I, I have one other ask. Do you mind reading the annual town election notice, Selectmen Pacheco?
Is it in the packet?
Yes. It is two pages after the last page of the agenda.
Okay, I see it. Annual Town Election, April 10th, 2021, at the Dayton Elementary School, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Nomination papers are available at the Town Clerk's Office on Monday, January 4th, 2021, for the following offices listed below. Last day to obtain papers is 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 18th, 2021. The deadline to return nomination papers to the Town Clerk's Office is 5:00 PM on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. For your name to be placed on the ballot, it is necessary to obtain at least 33 signatures of registered voters, 1% of the total voters who voted for the governor in the last state election. Chapter 53, Section 6. The offices that are up for election is the Assessor, it's a three-year term. Dayton, we hold with Regional School Committee Member. There is two members will be elected in three-year terms. Housing Authority is a five-year term. Parks and Recreation is a three-year term. Our Planning Board is a five-year term. Public Library Trustee is a three-year term. Selectment is a three-year term. Sewer Commissioner is a three-year term. Town Moderator is a one-year term, and the Tree Warden is a three-year term. And this was submitted by Town Clerk, Susan Amadiris.
Thank you, Selectmen Pacheco. So we are basically at 6:30. I did just want to ask, I see, there with me one moment, everyone. I see Attorney Costa is here. I see, Mr. Mello, are you here, sir? Charlie Mello, Conservation Commission?
Why don't we give him a few more minutes?
Okay.
Point six. Do we have any discretionary?
Mrs. Brady, I don't think, I didn't receive anything.
We don't have any tonight.
No discretionary, so let's go to public input? Public input, and there will be another public input. So I just ask, if you have public input related to something on the agenda, I just ask that you wait till we get there. And with that, anybody who, you know, we have three minutes, and I will come back to this after our scheduled appointment as well, but if you have something, please unmute yourself, Mr. Higgins. You can unmute.
Mr. Chairman, how are you tonight?
Good.
I did review, I did review your package, and the Board and Committee Handbook has a couple of areas of opportunity where you have the wrong information as far as open records law and the open meeting law referencing old statutes that have been repealed for 10 years. So you may want to table that tonight and have somebody go through it and correct the codification of the laws that you're referring to to make sure they're current and up to date.
Public records and open meeting law, Mr. Higgins?
Those were two places I saw, but I didn't really go through it with the fine truth home yet.
Okay, we can do that, sir. Do we know?
Okay, thank, thank you, Doc.
Absolutely. Anything else, Mr. Higgins?
That's it for now.
All right, sir. Anyone else have any public input that they would like to provide us with? No public input, quiet tonight. Everyone must be here for something on the agenda, I like that. Well, so since, if it's okay with my colleagues, since Mr. Higgins brought up the Board and Committee Handbook, do we want to simply move out of order and then take that under advisement until our next meeting?
I'll make a motion that we go to Old Business, number 7, a.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, Select, oh, yes, Selectmen Pacheco.
Okay, no, not on this, no, sorry.
Selectmen Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is aye. Under Board and Committee Handbook, I'm happy to go back and sit with our fearless Town Clerks, Susan Amadiris, and really go through those sections that Mr. Higgins mentioned, the public records specifically, and also the open meeting law specifically. And then after doing that, then we could think about putting this back on the agenda under Old Business on February 10th.
Mr. Chairman?
Selectmen Goulart?
I move that we continue to have the Board and Committee Handbook remain in the draft state until you have an opportunity to research it further and that we take this up at a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I just want to thank you, Mr. Higgins, for apprising us of this information. We certainly-
I'll go through and send you an email of anything that I find, and you'll be with it.
Saving me a lot of time.
I'll send it to my mentor, Ken Pacheco.
Absolutely. In all seriousness, I appreciate that, Mr. Higgins. I also wanted to say, and to my colleagues, I may not have said this before, and I apologize. And I may be repeating myself, so I apologize for that as well. The whole intent of this is that when we have someone who, you know, let's say, wants to volunteer for the first time, that we're giving them some kind of reference book, like a guidebook, to really help them so that they understand what their roles and responsibilities are as a volunteer for the Town of Dayton. Or, you know, a person on a board that gets compensated.
Is this something that we should have Town Council look at?
We can run it by Town Council. We can, if you want, we can specifically run, once Mr. Higgins sends me the revisions, I can update it and run it through those sections, at least through Town Council, for sure.
Yeah.
Probably a good idea, good idea. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, and this is to take it under advisement? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Don't forget, don't forget, you need a roll call vote, you have a remote participation meeting.
Opposed? Abstentions? Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is aye. Okay, now we're late, and I apologize. Is Ms.- Is Mr. Mello here? Okay. Mrs. Brady, is Mr. Mello coming?
I thought he was coming.
Yep, he told us he was.
You have a phone number for him, Mrs. Brady?
Yeah, I think so, let me try it.
Bear with us, everyone.
Mr. Chairman? I was going to do this under Selectmen's reports, but since I see Attorney Costa here, he's going to shudder and say, what now? At the Stormwater Committee meeting today, we had a hearing on the Brook Street Solar Farm. I've given you updates on that. We have run into a unique situation where, instead of the town contacting property owners for easements, the proponents of the solar farm need an easement on town property. So I need to contact Attorney Costa to tell us how to do that, since I've never run into anything like this, and I have some maps and drawings. And so the Stormwater Committee would be making this request, and I have some plans that I can share. So I know in the past, I've been allowed to contact council for specific things like easements and that. So this is along the same lines, and I just wanted to mention it to you that we need to contact Attorney Costa, okay?
Everyone, bear with me just a moment, I have Mr. Mello on the.
Okay.
Mrs. Brady, do you mind just sending the number for the Zoom to Mr. Mello's email? He's going to dial in.
Sure.
Yep.
Government in action. That was in action, not in action.
Okay, so Dr. Z, did you hear what I said about having to contact Attorney Costa?
I didn't hear the end, and I apologize.
Okay, so, in honor for the Stormwater Committee, we voted to grant the permit conditioned on the wording we need from Attorney Costa, which is, I call it a reverse easement agreement. And also, once we get that, we'll give that to Mr. Agia, Mr. Pilling, and Mr. Ferry. They're all involved in it because this easement is actually a drainage easement. So in the past, you've allowed me to contact council when I needed direction on easements and land taking. So this is just another instance, so I'm just offering this as informational thing, so that you know about this.
Thank you. We appreciate the updates, Selectman Goulart.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, so Mr. Mello's going to call in in just a second, and I apologize, everyone. Attorney Costa? I know, I said, sort of asked, invited you, and I'm glad you were able to come. I know you're very busy. I had wanted you to sort of apprise us of, and sort of explain how we, what was done to get us to this point. And I don't know if you wanted to start us off while we're waiting for Mr. Mello, who is familiar with the situation. Did you want to apprise us of the ongoing, sir?
Sure, yes, so, thank you, Chairman Zagrafos and the other members of the board. So the reason that I was interested in attending this meeting was basically just to explain what the Conservation Commission's appeal is, just so that there's not confusion around what, sort of what it is or what it isn't. My, so I understand, two weeks ago, the Selectmen had a discussion regarding this matter, and in particular, the Conservation Commission's need for council and its appeal that initiated regarding the Strawberry Fields 40B approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So basically, the status that I'd like to report to you and just the information I want to provide is that our office cannot represent the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission came to the Board two weeks ago to see if the Board would appoint special counsel. Is my understanding of what transpired two weeks ago. What I would just like, so I'm not here on behalf of the Conservation Commission. I'm here just to provide information to the Board of Selectmen about what their case is so that you understand what is being requested. So the Conservation Commission, its appeal is based on its status as a neighboring landowner. Generally, a municipal body does not have standing to appeal a 40B decision. So in most scenarios, a, you know, another board of the town, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, what have you, wouldn't have the ability to do that at all. The Conservation Commission had voted, my understanding, because it was done before they contacted this office, to appeal based on its position as an abutting landowner. And so that's an exemption to the general rule. And I'm sure the attorneys, you know, they might argue about that, but that's the basis for what they did, was their status as an abutting landowner. So it's a, it's, it's, it's an appeal by a neighboring landowner. That's the only basis for their ability to assert that they have any standing at all. And I just wanted to clarify that their appeal is not, it doesn't have anything to do, per se, with a, sort of like a notice of intent, the Wetland Protection Act, the litigation that occurred a few years ago on the prior proposal that was made for the same property, DEP. It's not, it's not a DEP proceeding. It's not a Wetland Protection Act matter where it's, it really hasn't, it's really not based on the Wetland Protection Act and, and that type of proceeding. It's really, it's really this status as a neighboring landowner. So I just wanted to kind of explain that it's really not like what had ensued a few years ago that involved an order of conditions and superseding order and an appeal with DEP. It's just totally disconnected from that, and I just wanted to make sure the Board understood that. Because I had information that there might have been some confusion about, just procedurally, what they had done and whether it might be connected somehow to, you know, superseding orders of conditions and that type of thing. It's not, it's really a zoning appeal. It's under Chapter 40B, but they filed it as a neighboring landowner. And so that's what they're seeking special counsel on, which is something that's, you know, for them to present and for the Selectmen to consider. But I just, I hope that's somewhat clarifying, and if it's not, if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
So I, I have a question then. So what are they appealing? I mean, they're a butter. What are they challenging? Are they challenging the whole 40B? What if, I don't understand what they're challenging.
Basically, when a land, when a butter challenges a decision, that's what they are doing, they're challenging the decision.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we have two ZVA members that are attending, so those that can't see who's attending, it's Mr. Gale and it's Greg Logan.
Thank you.
So that they know that these two members, I don't see a third one, so they're not violating any quorum or anything like that, but I only see two members.
Thank you. And I still don't see anyone from Conservation. But I did want to say, Attorney Costa, that did help clarify a lot for me. I know there had been a question, I guess, raised about whether or not this was supposed to go to Conservation, or I think your response, for me anyway, really helps clear that up, those ambiguities that were lingering from last week. Selectman Goulart? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, yep, you have the floor.
So Attorney Costa, in effect, since the Conservation Commission is a duly appointed commission in the Town of Dayton, is it actually the Town of Dayton that is the abutter? And is appealing the decision?
I would say, I would say no. Because under Chapter 48C, the Conservation Commission can hold property for conservation purposes. So I think it is fair to say that it is the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Costa, that's a really good question. I'm hearing a little background noise. Mr. Agostino, I'm sorry, I muted you, but if you want to speak, absolutely, you can unmute yourself. But I think the background noise was coming from you, sir, I apologize. Attorney Costa, my question is related to Selectman Goulart's question. If, this is so confusing for me, and I apologize. If this is them as the Conservation Commission, because it's their land owned by the Conservation Commission specifically, and they're filing the appeal as an abutter of the land that, that they own as the Conservation Commission, is it not possible, I, I guess I'm wondering why this is coming to the Board of Selectmen? Because aren't they able, if they want to retain special counsel, to use their own funds that are separate from the town? I'm sorry, I apologize if that's like a loaded question, so please take all the time you need to answer, but I think it is something that my colleagues will need clarification on.
I think they're here, I, I, my, my understanding is they were here to assess other funds other than what is within their specific account. Whether they could use their own funds, I, I mean, that's kind of a policy question. I, I think in the past, they, they've done that, but I think that would require some further consideration, but I don't think that's what they're here, what here, what they're here before the Selectmen for.
Well, they want us to approve the use of town funds for their special counsel. So my question is, if they're, if they're dealing with this not as the Town of Dayton, but as the Conservation Commission, because they're a land abutter, then why are we even entertaining this at all? I'm just, if they can use their own funds to pay for their special counsel, why do they need us to entertain this request?
I think, I think just to clarify, they're a board of the town, and I think the way it would be conceptually is that they basically are respond, they, they're acting for the town. It's town conservation land under their control or oversight management. So it's not as if they're totally, they're not really a separate entity from the town, there's, but they're a separate board, and they do have authority to hold land, which is different from other boards. So I, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's not town property, but it's, 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 it's property that's been committed to the Conservation Commission stewardship. It's probably a fair way to conceptualize it.
Selectman Goulart, and then Selectman Pacheco?
So they would have to come to the Board of Selectmen to get permission to use counsel other than Town Council. That's why they're coming before us.
I believe so.
So just, just like any board who, for some reason, let's say, needs a, an attorney who specializes in a particular area, they would come to us and we would ask Town Council if it was acceptable. And if Town Council said to the Selectmen, yes, they can hire attorney so-and-so, that's fine with us. And usually what happens is that attorney that's hired keeps Town Council in the loop for informational purposes. My understanding of the money that the Conservation Commission has under its control, I believe that's the money that is the money that's paid back when land comes out of Chapter, is it 61? And it can be used to acquire more property. That's what we did when we acquired one-third share, I'll call it, of Council Oak II. It was to acquire property. I'm not sure that money can be used for other expenses. So I think that's why they're coming to us. The, as, the reason I asked Attorney Costa that question before, they are a duly appointed board of the Town of Dayton. Yes, they can hold land. That land carries a conservation restriction, but if you got down to the nitty-gritty, it belongs to the Town of Dayton, it's under their control. If somebody slipped and fell on that land, they wouldn't go after the concom. They'd be coming to the Town of Dayton. So it's, it's one of those areas that's got a lot of entanglements. But I think that's why they came to us, because they're a town board, and I don't think they can use the money they've got for legal expenses.
Thank you, Selectman Goulart. Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah, so as many of you know, I was on a ZVA for 17 years, and during that time, we had seven 40Bs. You literally spend hundreds of hours on a 40B, a one 40B, never mind the seven that we dealt with. So I'd be interested in knowing, as soon as Mr. Mello joins us, how many meetings he went to? How many meetings did he bring up his objections to this? I, and I honestly want to find out what his objection is. So I, without him being here, I don't think we can make a decision on this. And I would also like to know how much it cost the town the last time we challenged the 40B that is in the same spot? Because it's, it's town, townspeople's money. I don't think we're necessarily going to prevail on this case, so I'd be concerned about how much money we're going to spend. I'd be interested in seeing if the Conservation can spend their own monies, but we can't. Every time one board wants to, basically, they're, they're not going after the ZVA, they're going after the 40B. I get that, but they're really challenging all the hard work that the ZVA, the Town of Dayton's ZVA did in this. And if you look at all the conditions, they've dealt with wetlands, they've dealt with all of that stormwater and all that. So I, I'd be interested if Conservation has rejected this plan by a vote. And I'd be interested in knowing how much it's going to cost the town, because I'm not convinced that the town is going to prevail on this.
Thank you. Before I go to Mr. Hashem, who has his hand raised very politely, thank you, sir, you will be recognized. Selectman Pacheco, you don't mind if I piggyback off your comment, do you?
No.
You've never minded before, so I appreciate the consistency. In all seriousness, what I find to be the most concerning thing, and again, I'm not, we appreciate very much the hard work that every volunteer, appointed or elected official gives to this town, but I find it very concerning that we have boards that are openly in disagreement with one, one another, because I think the message that it gives people is that people aren't working collaboratively on how they can make these 40Bs work for the Town of Dayton. So we have one board making a decision, the other board doesn't agree. We need, something is wrong with the system, we need to work together. We know that we haven't hit our 10% for the affordable housing threshold, so we need to make these 40Bs beneficial to our town rather than simply reacting to them. And it just, I, I really hope that we will come together on the next one, because there will be a next one, yes, there will be a next one. We need to make them work and benefit for the town and not be openly fighting with one another on our decisions. We need to work collaboratively in planning for them, not fighting desperately in reacting to them. And with that, Mr. Hashem, you've been very patient, you have the floor, sir, and then Mr. Mello.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zagrafos, for, for recognizing me. I just want to, I have several comments, if you don't mind. First one is what you just mentioned, based on what Mr. Costa just, just mentioned, it, the, the, there is no really confusion or battle between different departments or different entities in the, within the town. Because the, the Conservation Commission is not fighting the decision, they're fighting as, as a, a, a property owner, as an abutter. And here is the biggest point that I would like to make, which I think Selectman Goulart alluded to. If you look at the deed, the deed is not. If you look at the deed, the deed is not owned by the Conservation Commission. It's owned by the town of Dayton. That's plain, simple, straightforward. And based on that, the, the, the Conservation Commission does not have a standing. And based, based on that, this is what Selectmen Pacheco was talking about. That, that, in my, in, in our humble opinion, is as of money spending unnecessarily. Because if, in fact, it was, and, 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 and again, I would like to reiterate what Selectmen Pacheco said. Many, many, many hours were spent. And there was no stone unturned, left unturned. And, and I do appreciate everybody, volunteers and non-volunteers and, and, and attorneys and engineers and professionals that worked at this and, and, and six times since Sundays reviewed every single nut and bolt that went into this design. And, and the ironic thing is the board itself, the ZBA board, recognized that, that the, the Conservation that they, the, the board cannot make a decision on Conservation's behalf. They recognize that, okay, the, 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 the you, Mr. Mister Developer, proposed, makes sense to us, it makes the first cut. But we're going to want you to go before Conservation to make sure that they approve it and they're in conformance, because they're the authority, the permit granting authority on it, not us. So nobody passed a buck, nobody is conflicting with anybody. Conservation, they are appealing not because they feel that the design is inadequate or, 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 or not has, has issues. They're, they're, they are they're, they are asserting that our development is impacting the abutting, an abutting property that they own. Which, we have issues with both of that. I don't think we're impacting it, because it's a thousand feet away from any development that we're doing. And there is a big parcel of land that we had planned on donating to the town that, that stands between us and, and that abutting property to, in order for, for the town to look for a well for water and to, to preserve open space, number one. Number two, they actually do not own it. Conservation doesn't own it. With that, if, if you don't mind, I would like to, if, if you, if you would allow me to just have Mr. Agostino to just say a couple of words, because I'm a layman, he's a, he's a technical guy that can talk to, to, to the deed issue.
Absolutely. I just want to point out, I know Mr. Mello joined late. I only had this scheduled for a half hour and we're almost at a half hour. Would that, Mr. Agostino?
Yes, I, I think just very quickly, I, I just wanted to appear tonight to correct any misstatements, because I really think that the reason we're even dealing with this is because of, of you know, a misunderstanding of the application of chapter fortyB and the ZBA's role. And as Mr. Pacheco pointed out, the ZBA sat in place of the Conservation Commission in working towards issuing a permit. So they were filling the Conservation Commission's roles with respect to any local concern, any and all local concerns, including the Conservation Commission's stewardship, not ownership, but stewardship of that parcel in question. That parcel in question is owned by the town, but it is under the stewardship of the Conservation Commission. And as such, that's just another role that the zoning board makes a determination on, not the Conservation Commission. The zoning board wears all of the hats in town when it issued a comprehensive permit. And all the parties did work collaboratively, collaboratively together. And the Conservation Commission did provide comments to the zoning board. And the zoning board was very careful, as Mr. Hashem pointed out, not to make any decision that would overrule the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction to make the ultimate determination on wetlands. So that was what was so surprising to us, notwithstanding the fact that they are not a person under chapter fortyB and they don't have the legal right to appeal that. And I understand that, you know, in a short appeal period around the holidays and with questions as to whether or not there may be an issue there, Gay and Gay went ahead and another attorney that wasn't involved in representing the ZBA filed the appeal just to preserve rights. But now that the dust has settled and, you know, the mere, the mere fact that we're dealing with all these conflicts of interest should tell tell the board something. I think at the end of the day, it, it should become apparent that the ZBA and not the CONCOM passes judgment on all these issues and the CONCOM has a separate hearing at which all of these issues are going to be vetted before the CONCOM. So I, I just wanted to make that point clear that legally, they, and, and again, we can argue this in court, but I think our point to this board is, we prefer to save your money and the town's money. And ultimately, if you do vote to appoint an attorney for the Conservation Commission, you will also then have to appoint an attorney for the zoning board to defend the zoning board's decision. Because the applicant paid for Gay and Gay to represent the zoning board during its hearing and explain the complexities of chapter fortyB and how the zoning board makes decisions for the Conservation Commission when it comes to all matters local, including the local stewardship of an adjacent parcel, which was never specifically raised that I can recall during the hearing, but other, other wetlands issues were. But in any event, just to, to close that point, it's, it's been determined by Gay and Gay that if the CONCOM decides to go forward, they will then be conflicted out of even representing the zoning board. So the Board of Selectmen would have to appoint another attorney to then represent the zoning board against the Conservation Commission just to argue the technical issue under fortyB. And again, this isn't about protection of wetlands. This is a technical issue under fortyB that the CONCOM cannot appeal the decision of a zoning board sitting as a reviewer of a fortyB decision on all matters local, any matter local. It is not the Jepson decision, which is the one exception to the rule where a municipal housing authority, a body politic, a corporation that actually owns property may appeal where their abutting property is, is in jeopardy. But not this situation where I think it, it's just as a result of confusion among local boards as to their role, an appeal was filed just to preserve rights and now it's set in motion the events that we're dealing with. But now that the dust has had, is settled, we just wanted to make that point clear that there's another hearing before the CONCOM and they, they can have at it. They have a, and that's all on the applicant's dime. You know, the applicant's funding BETA, which is a sophisticated peer reviewer to review everything wetlands. And at that point, you know, all of their concerns will, will be addressed. But they have no right to challenge under fortyB the waiver of the local zoning, of the local wetlands bylaw or local concerns about impacts on land the town owns. So I wanted to clarify the legal issues and hopefully that provides some context.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mello? Mr. Mello, I'm going to give five minutes. We're already over and we have a long agenda and we have to go over our budgets. So five more minutes and then I'm going to call for a vote. Dennis's iPad? I assume that's you, Mr. Mello?
No, that's the attorney.
Oh, yes, that's, okay. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, is Charlie Mello on the phone or is he not attending?
He's on the phone. Yep, he's just muted, that's all.
Okay, I, I only raised my hand to correct a misstatement that Attorney Agostino just made. I attended every single hearing at the zoning board. In fact, I've attended every meeting of every land use board in Dayton on this project for the last five years, including the planning board and including the Conservation Commission. And it's not true that the Conservation Commission issues were dealt with at the ZBA. I filed at the very first hearing a comprehensive letter that is three pages, single spaced, about the wetland issues. It's dated August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. And attached to it is all of the history of the wetland permitting. The ZBA refused to deal with wetland issues because they were only wanting to deal with zoning issues. A year later, I filed another letter and I know that the Conservation Commission filed at least two comment letters. The net result was that the zoning board waived all of the wetland rules, regulations and bylaws of the town of Dayton and left the, the Conservation Commission only to deal under the state Wetland Protection Act, which doesn't provide nearly the same protections as the local rules. So I just wanted to make that clarification for the board before it makes a decision.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege?
I'm sorry, yes.
I, I just, I, I wanted to point out that Mr. Murphy just said that I made an untrue statement and I would take exception to that and I'm strongly disappointed that, you know, he'd mentioned I said anything untrue. I made the conclusion that the Conservation Commission did not make any decision, any final decision of substance on wetlands protection other than to waive the local wetlands bylaw. And I'm sure that Attorney Murphy and I will litigate that ad nauseam in the Superior Court in his action representing abutters. But I, I just, as a point of personal privilege, just wanted to avoid or, or, or comment that I'm disappointed you would use the statement untrue. I, I don't believe I said anything untruthful. These are complex technical issues, which is why, again, the applicant funded Gay and Gay to advise the, the zoning board. And I think Gay and Gay's counsel did a good job advising the zoning board. And, and they had a legal decision and, and we will defend that decision and all their hard work against what we believe are frivolous abutter appeals in this instance.
Okay, you get the final word. And again, I just don't want I feel like we have all we need to come to a decision. I guess I want to ask my colleagues, it is seven oh five. We have a full agenda. Do we want to vote on whether to approve or continue to approve these use of special counsel by Conservation Commission?
We haven't heard from Charlie Mello yet.
Yeah, that's because he was thirty minutes late. And we have an agenda, so unfortunately, we can't, you know, put everything off because someone's late.
Is he here?
I haven't, he looks like he's here.
We wanted to know what the CONCOM position was. I mean, at least two minutes, if you can give us just a quick rundown.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to Mr. Mello speaking for two minutes. I know we're running a little bit behind.
Mr. Mello, I can't unmute him, I'm sorry. Like, it's not a setting that I put on there, so he has to unmute himself. Mr. Mello? I don't know why I'm talking into it, I'm sorry. Mr. Mello? You have to hit the mute, unmute button in the bottom left-hand corner.
Isn't he on his phone?
Yeah, we have to do star six, is it?
He might have to do star six if he's on his phone, but it has a video option. Oh, there he is. Hi, Mr. Mello.
Hi.
Hey, sir.
That's pretty, yes. Sorry I'm late. Well, we would like to proceed with the, hopefully, we could get some changes in acceptance of our bylaw. The reason why I felt that we should proceed with this appeal. The bylaw is a, a lot more protective of the, of the wetland area in, adjacent to that development. And the development threatens that, all that resource area. Outstanding resource waters, waters that serve the town of Somerset. And they've used every inch of the land available to them and got as close to the wetlands as they could. We disapproved the last applicant and spent over a hundred thousand dollars in, in defending our refusal to grant the permit to them for the same reason. And DEP felt that we were correct and, and and voted in our favor. We spent a ton of money to do it. So I thought that this, and the board did too. We discussed this amongst ourselves and we thought that this appeal might be able to wedge or allow us to get our local bylaw regulations back into play. That's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectmen Goulart?
Mr. Mello?
Yes.
Do you know if the money that is controlled by the CONCOM can be used to pay legal expenses?
I don't. I know we paid legal expenses in the past. I'm not sure what account it came from. But I know that we funded the bulk of the money in the last appeal.
You did pay some, that answers the question then. So you used some conservation money to fight the last case that ended up being in favor of the town?
From some account, yes. I'm not sure which one.
Well, I can, you know, not having the numbers in front of me, I, there's definitely not enough money in a regular fiscal year's Conservation Commission budget to fight, you know, a hundred thousand dollar case. So I definitely think that must have been partially of these Conservation Commission funds, monies, excuse me. So I feel like that is my part of the question. Mr. Mello, yep, you have the floor, sir.
Go ahead.
No, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I'm not sure what account that was used. I think it was an account that we had saved from, from people who, damn, I can't remember the account. But we had a ton of money in there to buy land and we use it for the purpose of protecting that parcel. I don't know how much we've regenerated back into our account, but we do have some funds there.
Mr. Mello?
Yes.
How would, how would Conservation Commission go about finding out how much money is in there? Because I know some of the funds were used, for example, and correct me if I'm wrong, Selectmen Goulart, to purchase, for example, Council Oak? So yeah, so I know that was a significant sum of money. I'm going to give my personal preference, Mr. Mello. I, I feel like if you, if the Conservation Commission is able to use their own funds, I would prefer that. But how would the Conservation Commission go about finding out how much is in there?
We would have to ask the town accountant.
Okay, so we can, we can consult accounting on this?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Colleagues, you have the floor if you have any further questions or comments.
Yeah, I just, I have a question for Mr. Mello. Can you tell me how many times any member of the Conservation Commission attended any of the ZVA meetings regarding this fortyB?
Pardon?
I'll repeat it. Can you tell me how many or if any conservation members attended any of the fortyB hearings that the ZBA had on this, on Strawberry Fields?
Attended their hearings? None?
Yeah. Thank you.
Selectmen Goulart, I know you had your hand up.
Okay, I lost my train of thought. I agree, we need to find out how much money the Conservation Commission has. I get a feeling it's one account. I don't think it's multiple accounts. And I think that it gets replenished through the back taxes that get paid for land out of sixty-one A, I think it is. We know that there would have been payments for solar farms that have come out of chapter land. And so that money would have gone in the account. So I don't know exactly what's there. I think the important thing is, and town accountant should be able to look this up. The last time there was a case involving that particular property, what did it cost the town? And when I say the town, that's the CONCOM in any money that, any money that came out of a town account. We need to know that. The other thing we need to know is how much money is currently in the CONCOM account? And we need an idea, if they're going to hire an attorney, an idea of what kind of money they're talking about spending. I think our role is to just determine whether or not, as Select- I think our role is to just determine whether or not, as selectmen, we will give them permission to pursue this if they have the funding to do it, because I really think that's the situation we're dealing with.
Thank you. I guess what we need to decide tonight, team, Selectman Goulart and Selectman Pacheco, is we obviously know that we're going to consult or Conservation will look into with the accounting department how much money they have in their funds. I guess what we need to decide tonight, however, is whether we want to continue approving the use of special town council, I guess, from town funds? I guess is what I would call it, not this conservation-specific fund. Do we want to continue allowing this until we have that clarification? Or, so how do we want to proceed?
Do you think we can have this on the next agenda? Because it, I don't want to be spending money if there's no merit to spending it. And I'm not talking about, per se, the issue that they're pursuing. We need to know the information that I have just mentioned, that I requested. My only concern, like the last time, if there are deadlines that have to be met before our next meeting, and a law firm would have to file whatever is necessary so that we aren't in default until we get a correct answer, then I would say we would have to at least allow a law firm to follow anything to prevent a default. Beyond that, I hope by the time we have the next meeting, we have the information to make a final decision, because I don't think it makes sense to continue to pay special counsel if, in fact, when we get the information, this thing has gone nowhere, and it would be very expensive to litigate. I just don't want to go into default within the next two weeks. My thought.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Yes, and then we really need to move on. I mean, this is already 7:15. And then we have a zoning board member who wants to speak.
I apologize, but whatever decision the Board of Selectmen makes, keep in mind you'll also have to appoint counsel for the zoning board. The zoning board's going to need their counsel as well to defend it. So that needs to be tied to any appropriation. I would note that the Conservation Commission actually is already in default of their obligations. So, you know, we are planning to serve motions to dismiss regardless of the technical issue that they're not allowed to bring the complaint. So I just, I had tried to get in touch with Attorney Costa. I was speaking with Attorney Mitchell, who I thought had conveyed and signaled that we were all on the same page about the legal issues here. But unfortunately, I don't think we're quite there yet, and it might be worthwhile, since, again, there's no time pressure at this point, since they're going to have to make the same argument if they do want to move forward, that they were prevented from complying for various reasons. But I do think that a legal memorandum should be submitted to both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen, because, you know, as an attorney that practices in Chapter 40B, I'm sure it would be fun for Attorney Murphy, although he's determined he's conflicted out as well, or whoever the Conservation Commission decides to litigate the issue. These would be fun issues for them from a technical perspective. But at the end of the day, the law is set up to have wetland issues discussed before the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Mr. Logan, you have a minute.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And you're from the zoning board. I just wanted to, for everybody who, I think, you know, you should have a say, Mr. Logan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It was very difficult to hear you, Mr. Logan.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better, yep.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Agostino had stated what I wanted to be clear, that we would have to hire counsel as well.
Yes, yeah, and that was, and I want to let my colleagues know that was already an issue that was getting raised. And I want to be honest, I'm a little hesitant to, just my personal opinion, to keep this going on another two weeks, because our next meeting isn't until February 10th, and now we've gone a whole month. So I just want us to be mindful of that as well when we make this decision. It's not just to get us through the next meeting. In total, it will have gone on a month. So do we want to make a decision on this?
I think it really relates to, does CONCOM have the money, number one? And number two, do they want to pay for these two attorneys? Because if, in fact, this is not the town of Dayton, per se, pursuing this, it's the Conservation Commission, which I realize is a committee of the town of Dayton. I don't want to get mired down in a lot of legal fees and expenses if, in fact, if they don't have the money, it's over as far as I'm concerned, quite frankly.
I feel the same way. And Selectman Pacheco, I'm going to call, if it's okay with everyone, I do want to call like a very brief recess after this decision. Sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm not in favor of spending any more money on this case. I think it's a case that we're not going to prevail. It cost over $100,000 the last time. I understand we did prevail, but I think the circumstances are a little different. I get it, it's the same land, but this design is completely different than the previous plan that was there. So I'm opposed to spending any monies. And if the Conservation has monies, they can go for it. But I'm not interested in spending taxpayers' money on this.
Mr. Agostino, I did just want to apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. So I guess, I guess my understanding is we only authorize Conservation to continue to use town funds to fund a special town council through this meeting. So, correct me if I'm wrong, team, but if we don't make a vote tonight to specifically to continue to allow use of town funds to pay for a special town council, then I think that that ends. Is that correct?
That would be my understanding.
I will entertain motions. I mean, I'm not, everyone gets a say. So if someone wants to make a motion to continue, I will entertain it. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to, I guess, just reiterate the fact that my interpretation, based on the action the Board of Selectmen took at our January 13th meeting, is that there is no more use of town funds to pay for a special town council in this particular matter. Okay?
If I, if I, Chairman?
Of course, sir.
I think one, I think one item to be clarified is to, Selectman Goulart's earlier point, is whether there's any, there's the authority to, for the Conservation Commission to have special counsel. So I'm not sure if the action taken has provided any clarification. They were authorized through today, and I don't know, in the absence of a motion, if that authority ends, it's kind of left in limbo.
Okay, I see what you're saying. And, but I guess my, just, I guess my understanding is, and not being a lawyer or playing one on TV, Attorney Costa, is that they, if they want to continue to use the special town council, then they would have to look into seeing if they can use their funds that have accumulated in that conservation fund account, excuse me.
I think to Selectman Goulart's earlier point, to have counsel, it should be authorized through the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so you want to, I understand where you're going. We want a specific motion to not allow further use by Conservation Commission of a special town council. Is that correct, sir?
I'm not suggesting either way with the motion. But I think, I think that is the point, yes.
Okay, so we need to vote either way, I guess, is what our counsel is stating. And I think that that makes a lot of sense. Selectman Goulart?
I'm going to attempt a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that prior to any definitive and final action of this board, Board of Selectmen I'm referring to, Conservation must verify its financial position and whether or not it can use its funds to hire separate counsel. And if, in fact, there are funds available, any expense the town has already incurred should be reimbursed for those expenses, which means they've got to come back to us, but we're not going to, we're not going to put any more money in the pot. They're going to have to make a decision whether or not they have funding and whether or not they want to consider using it. They can come back to the board then and say that, but they've got to also understand there is a second attorney that's out there. That would be the zoning attorney. And based on what I'm saying, the first hurdle is CONCOM came to us and said, can we hire an attorney? We need your permission. Our question to them is, you got money to cover it? We also know that the ZBA would have to have an attorney. We also know, we're not looking to fund that position either for those services. So I don't think we're at the point yet of just scrapping the whole thing. This really, this really revolves around the initial request from the CONCOM. And the question we need answered is, do you have the money?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman, one other thought. It's going to come back to us one more time, and I underline the word, one more time, words. I don't want this to continue on and on and on. I do not support hiring another attorney to represent the ZBA or any other board who may get mixed up in this whole thing. The only question I want to address is, ZBA is, excuse me, is CONCOM. Have you got the money and can you spend it?
Thank you, Selectman Goulart. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Goulart, roll call.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is aye. If it's okay with everyone, we are going to continue with our agenda, starting with a continuation of public input. I just ask for a brief two- to three-minute recess, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. We'll be right back at 7:27 PM. Okay, everyone. We are good to go. Mrs. Brady is still on break. So with that, I wanted to ask, does anybody have any more public input that is unrelated to anything on the agenda? Hearing none, we can move on to the Serpide sign study. And again, this is the engineering sign study that needs to be performed in order to determine how many safety zone signs need to be placed and where. And so I spoke to Luis Di Olivera, and he, we sent a detailed map. Thank you to Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry for generating the safety zone map. It was really nice. We forwarded it to Mr. Di Olivera, who's a transportation planner at Mass Relay and also with Serpide. And so they are, they are still working on the technical manual, and they will have further updates for us soon. So that is all I have. I just, I'm going to ask for this to be on the agenda literally every meeting until we get it done. More for myself to keep my and make sure it gets done. So that was my report. More to come from Luis with Serpide. He's been fantastic. Under Selectmen's reports, we had, there was some language in the current union contract for the Highway Union regarding inclement weather. I'm going to ask my colleagues to go back a little ways into our memory, and there was a town hall closure somewhat recently. I forget what exact date it was. But town hall was closed and employees kept working, okay? So the union wanted clarification as to whether or not they're entitled to their eight hours of administrative time based on the town hall closure. And so initially, I thought, well, it's very clear. People kept working remotely even though town hall was closed. Well, as we know, contracts don't care about that. It just says town hall is closed, so the building was physically closed. So in speaking further with the Highway Superintendent, who has been really a real source of knowledge and good counsel on this issue, he drew up a, I don't know what to call it, like an agreement on paper. And I just wanted to read it to you, because essentially, it sounds like the Highway Union understands the ambiguity in the language and worked with us on it, which was really nice. And it just says, when, and this is the language, "When town hall has an opening delay, closure, or early release due to inclement weather, employees of the DPW will receive, in addition to their normal rate of pay and applicable contract language, admin time for all hours worked while town hall is closed." So again, it just says town hall is physically closed. It doesn't matter if people are still at home, working, and services are not impacted. And so the agreement says, "Please be advised, due to the current times during this pandemic and the ability of the town hall to be closed and town hall employees able to work from home as directed during intent of this section of the contract agreement till the expiration."
Dr. Z, you keep cutting out.
Looks like he's spoken.
You're frozen now.
Be something that we try to clarify in the next round. Does that make sense?
We missed most of what you said. You froze for a while, and there was no audio.
I have no idea why my internet is being problematic. Can you hear me?
Pay your bill.
Well, that's the sad part, is it's paid in the internet, isn't any better. Did everyone hear me read that agreement, that paragraph?
I heard up to the pot about if town hall is closed, and then there was something after that.
Okay, it just says, "Please be advised, due to the current times during this pandemic, the ability of town hall to be closed and town hall employees are still able to work from home as directed during inclement weather. The town in good faith will continue to honor the intent of this section of the contract agreement till the expiration of the current contract expiring June 30th, 2022, where at such time, this section is to be reconsidered by both parties." So. Of the current contract expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, where at such time, this section is to be reconsidered by both parties. So. We're all acknowledging on paper that there's some ambiguity there that definitely needs to be clarified. In the next negotiation, I felt comfortable signing it. Having that buy-in from the union steward, Mr. Barabee, and also our highway superintendent. And I do think that both parties will be. Either tidying up this language or possibly striking it during the next negotiations. Now that all of our employees are set up to work from home. I think that we need to address that and get that in there somehow acknowledged. So this shouldn't be an issue again, and we did come to an agreement and so there was no further, I don't know what the word is. Pursuit by the union. It was amicably resolved. The next, is that okay? Can I move on under Selectman's reports? Thank you. The next item I had a brief update on is the Shared Winter Streets Grant. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with this program. We did get a grant for this before and it has been very helpful in getting sidewalks installed throughout town. Mister Ferry and I, Superintendent Ferry did get together along with Mrs. Brady and initially we were brainstorming about. Where we could think about doing a project. We were looking at the street prioritization list. Which prioritizes projects and outlines sort of how much money they should cost. We initially chose Pleasant Street, but in looking at the street prioritization list, we really found that. ADA projects in various parts of town, both in North and South Dayton. Would probably have a higher chance of being funded. And, and we were all in agreement on that. And so what we're going to do is pull in our. Commissions on Disability Coordinator. So I caught myself. I almost said ADA coordinator. We're going to pull in Mister Gale and I've already been discussing. This with him. It's based on, we're going to use as a foundation a prior ADA grant that they had submitted. When Town Administrator Aaronstein was here, that didn't get funded and we're going to totally rework it. Together along with Superintendent Ferry and Mrs. Brady, of course. And we think we have a pretty good shot of retooling it and getting it done. And the other reason is because. If we were to pursue Pleasant Street. We would have to do planning and surveying, which costs money. We obviously don't have money yet. That's the whole point of the grant. And so since these. Americans with Disabilities Act projects already have planning and surveying behind them. That was another reason why we really felt like this would be a strong candidate for. Shared Streets and Spaces Winter Grant Funding. And so I just wanted to apprise my colleagues that. We have retooled a little bit. We are reshifting our focus. We are not abandoning Pleasant Street. We do have a place holds our article, excuse me, for the annual town meeting in, on file. And we will think about trying to write a special article to get some money for planning and surveying on Pleasant Street. But again, this project is further along and I think that it has a better chance of getting funded. So again, we have pulled in our COD Coordinator, Mister Gale, who I assume will apprise the COD. The Commission on Disabilities of these. I guess, new findings. But this is where we're thinking we're going to go and I feel like we're on solid footing to get the funding. Yeah, of course.
So this. This grant, if we get it. Is not focused on one street. It's focused on different areas in the town that need attention?
Different streets that really require. Upgrades, like curb cuts, like things that will help, for example, someone in a wheelchair get on. Exactly, exactly. And so there's some parts down, I want to say in the main street. Route one thirty eight intersection around there. And also I'll give you another example, Lincoln Ave. You know that sidewalk.
And the village, the village area where the mill is. There's, obviously there's areas there. I think that's a better route to go because number one. Pleasant Street is not only going to involve engineering and layout and design, it's going to end up. Needing either land taking or easements, ka-ching. So this, I believe, we can, if we get the grant money, we can put the grant money towards actually. Bringing more areas into compliance because we shouldn't be involved with designs and engineering and land taking.
Exactly. Well, I'm glad, see, we're all on the same page again. And the Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything on that? I'm sorry.
Very good. I think it's a, it's a great thing to do and we have a meeting this Thursday, Commission on Disability, so I'll be getting more information there.
Yeah, absolutely. The last thing I wanted to do was update you on. Some different IT grants that we have applied for. There's a cybersecurity training awareness grant. That both Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Kerwin, Sergeant Sean Cronin. And Chief McDonald and also our network administrator, Chris Rauner, worked on. And so we did apply for that grant. We applied for a cybersecurity health check grant and there was one other. Like an IT check grant that we applied for. We've heard back about the cybersecurity health check. Which will potentially point to some perhaps vulnerability vulnerabilities we may have in our security system. We're going to have that meeting tomorrow, both myself and Chris Rauner. Our network administrator with the vendor, Retro Fit Technologies. And I will keep the board apprised of any findings from that check. And also keep you updated on whether or not we will receive the other two grants. Absolutely. And now under new business. Is a vote to appoint Brett Zagrafos as the acting town administrator. I have clarification on this that our office received from town council. So bear with me just a moment. We had reached out to town council and the reason this is on the agenda because as we know, we haven't had a town administrator. And some things have certain processes in place, such as union processes that require. The town administrator and so decisions have had to be made. And documents have been signed. And so we reached out to town council to get some clarification on. If, if things, like how we can protect the town in this period where we haven't had a town administrator, but documents have continued to be signed. And I'll just read what town council wrote, if that's okay. They wrote regarding appointment of Selectman Zagrafos as interim town administrator, in our opinion. It would be best if the Board of Selectmen does not do that. Doing so would arguably violate the provision of the state ethics law that prohibits a member of a municipal board from being appointed to a position under. Supervision of such commission or board. And he cites MGL chapters two sixty eight A, section twenty one A. The statute does not refer to compensation and therefore it may arguably, excuse me, be a violation even if the subordinate position is unpaid, which obviously. It would be. To avoid this issue, we recommend a vote by the Board of Selectmen authorizing Selectman Zagrafos as an individual member of the board. To perform day-to-day administrative tasks of the Selectman's office until the new town administrator begins. Under this approach, you'll be authorized to do the administrative work you have been doing. But you are not formally being appointed to a separate position that is overseen by the Board of Selectmen. Which would arguably be a violation of the ethics law. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. So that was our legal opinion from town council on that. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I read that same letter.
My only comment is if something says the town administrator is supposed to do it. And we don't have a TA, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen or another member on the board as designated would step in. I don't see any reason to take action in all honesty. Rehoboth had a similar situation where the chairman of the board did his best to, I'll say, run the office till they got somebody. Without compensation. And on the other side, the east side of Dayton. There was a selectman who. Stepped up to do it and decided she wanted to be TA. So she had to resign as selectman. And I think there's a thirty day period before she could be appointed, but. And, and looking historically back. There have been times when we only had two members of the Board of Selectmen until the next election and they've carried on. So I, I don't think we have to take any action. We've appointed a TA and he's going to be coming soon. And I honestly believe what you've done is covered under the law as the chairman of the board. And other than the executive orders which you brought to us after. Action you've taken, you've told us about. So. You know, I, I don't think it's a problem.
But I just, you know, my, our job is obviously to protect the town and so. I did feel it was worthwhile to reach out to town council and to just at least get some sort of. Guidance on how we should proceed or if we need to do anything.
You want to be on firm footing and I think you have been. I think. I'll speak for myself, but I think Selectman Pacheco would agree. If you had come to us or you did something that we felt was, whoa, that's not in the best interest, we'd have told you that.
I would really hope so.
I would say, we're not going to agree with that, all right? So, you know, I think during this, I'll call it the interim period. And we decided we were going to rush out and get a TA. So, you know, I think, I think it's been handled fine by the board.
If you guys are good, I'm good. I just. I felt like we should at least, like I said, get the clarification. I also feel the same way, Selectman Goulart. I want to be very clear. I put this on the agenda before I knew we were going to. I mean, I still didn't know coming into the meeting, let's be honest, what would happen, but. So I, you know, I put this on there before that, but if we're good and we feel. Good about this, then I'm okay with that as well. I just want to make sure the town is always protected.
And I think it was probably a wise thing to do because in both of the cases I cited, Rehoboth and Berkeley, which ended up differently. Because Rehoboth did hire somebody to, I don't know if it's TR Executive Secretary, I'm not sure what it is, but. In both instances, there was a lot of public comment. That who does he think he is? Who does she think she is? And so, you know, I think you've kind of. Dispelled all of that because we really didn't get into that discussion about title. So as I say. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Let's make a comment on that also. I hope you're not offended by us, Dr. Z, by not taking the vote because you've done an awesome job. The public probably doesn't realize all the work that you've done the past couple of months with our town administrator. I mean, I said, number one, every time I go to the office, you're usually there in Mallory's office. And secondly, I went through the evaluations today. It took a lot of work to do those evaluations and they're not easy to do. And I want to commend you for all the work that you've done the past couple of months. It's, the public doesn't. See it, it goes unnoticed, especially with the office being closed. But you've taken on a lot of responsibility and I want to congratulate you on, on that. And the second point is I'm glad I wasn't chairman at this time.
Well, thank you. And I just. This, I would just want to be very clear, this wasn't on the agenda for accolades or anything like that. We all do the work quietly behind closed doors. Though the real work doesn't get done at a Selectman's meeting, it's getting done in your bedroom or in your study, you know, late at night. So. It's been an honor to serve the town. It's been an honor to, we all love this town. We had a difficult couple of months. Someone had to step up. We got it done as a team and that's how it should work. I'm not offended at all. I will be honest, if I wanted to be Dayton's town administrator, I would have applied. I did not for a reason. I'm, I'm just, I'm really proud of how far we've come and I just want to be clear to the people of Dayton. We are very lucky that we have really good department heads and just employees who. Individually stepped up over the last three months and also my colleagues stepping up. We could not have done this without just good department heads in personnel. It really took a village, literally. But we hired our town administrator tonight. I'm sure they are enthusiastic to start. And so we got through it as a team and I'm, I'm just really, I feel really blessed, honestly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z.
Absolutely. Thank you too. Next, we have a very difficult decision to make. We're going to vote to change the name from the ADA Commission to the Commission on Disability. And is it disability or disabilities? Selectman Pacheco.
I want to, I'm actually going to ask Jen, Jonathan, is the Commission on Disability?
It's, it's, it's the Commission on Disability, yes, sir.
It's not plural and single?
No, it's singular. It's the Commission on Disability, which is considered to be all inclusive.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. So did we want to have a discussion or I'll just entertain motions?
I'd like a motion that we. Change the ADA Commission to the Commission on Disability.
I'll second it. Do you serve on that, Ken?
I'm a non-voting member.
You know what? I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw the second if you withdraw the motion.
I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, Mister Chairman. I make a motion, excuse me, Mister Chairman, I move. That we change the name of the ADA Commission to the Commission on Disability.
Oh, I'm. I will step down and second that motion. Discussion.
I support it.
Yep, I support it as well. Hearing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye. And we will also next discuss appointing Jonathan Gale, our COD Commission on Disability Coordinator. To the Emergency Preparedness Committee. I support this, but in looking back at my records, if we appointed Mister Gale, he would, we would have an even number. So the town administrator, which I sit on this board as a non-voting member, the building commissioner. And the town administrator are non-voting. So do we want Mister Gale to be non-voting? Like, how are we gonna, then we'll have six. So how do we want to resolve that?
When you say you'll have six, with or without Mister Gale?
With Mister Gale will be six, five right now.
Five voting members?
Yes.
So is your question, do we want him to be a voting or a non-voting?
Essentially, yes. Yeah.
Which one?
I mean, I'm not really giving a suggestion. I'm just saying. If we make him a voting member, there's going to be six.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't think we should necessarily expand it to seven because. You know, the committee can get bigger and bigger and bigger, so I'm not sure about that, but I think it's going to be rare that it's going to be a three to three vote. So I'd be interested in hearing Mrs. Goulart, though she was going to say something when I interrupted her.
Before I make a motion, you're a non-voting member, right?
Yes.
So. Do you take part in discussions and express your opinion and, and so are you? Do you, can you do everything a member can do except vote?
Yes, but I want to be very clear, probably, I don't know how. Former Administrator Aaronstein handled her role on this committee. I am not an emergency expert, so I got to be honest, when I. Have attended the meetings, I mostly am there to like listen and take notes.
Okay, and Selectman Pacheco?
I do participate in the conversations. I can't make motions. I can't second emotions. I can't vote. But I do participate in the conversations and sometimes I give them guidance that from the Board of Selectmen's position.
That was when you were chair, when you?
Oh, that's a non-voting member. I think you're talking about the Commission on Disabilities.
Oh, and I was talking about the Emergency Preparedness Committee. We're on the same page.
Yeah, Commission on Disability. I'm a non-voting member. So I'm not sure if that answers your, Mrs. Goulart, your question.
So. The Emergency Prepared Committee right now has five voting members and two non-voting members.
Commissioner and the town administrator are non-voting.
If, if we were to make Mister. Gale. A voting member, I would think we should also include. Gale a voting member, I would think we should also include Mr. Agia as a voting member. I realize it would expand the committee to seven, but I would think the building commissioner's role, I'm surprised he's not a voting member, quite frankly.
I was not surprised when I looked back and realized that too, to be honest. I like, I understood the town administrator, I guess. But I was a little surprised when I found that the building commissioner also was a non-voting member.
So.
If, can I, can I just give my opinion? If we're not gonna expand and make the building commissioner a voting member, then I would prefer Mr. Gale be non-voting, simply to keep it at an odd number. But if we're, if, if we're okay with making the building commissioner a voting member, I will support him being a voting member, Mr. Gale being a voting member as well, so we can make it seven and keep it odd.
Okay, so that's not on the agenda tonight to expand the committee. So, I'm willing to make a motion. I am making a motion that we appoint Mr. Gale as a non-voting member of the excuse me, um.
Emergency Preparedness Committee, sorry, I have it like, right here.
Yeah, um. And I, when we have, if there's a second, others, I got another thought under discussion.
I think I can second that motion.
Okay, under discussion, I think we need to check with the Chair of that Emergency Committee. Tell them what we did tonight, and say to that chairman, well, how do you feel about going to seven members? Because if in fact uh, you're comfortable with that, and your committee is okay, there are two people that we would like to, we would like to vote to expand the committee to seven, and we would change the appointment of two people. Uh, Mr. Gale and Mr. Agia, and you would have a seven-member committee. So this way, right now, if this passes, he will be a non-voting member. But I think the fact that we've had this discussion about these two positions, uh, we can consider expanding the committee if it works for the committee.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I feel he should be a voting member, but I, I understand Mrs. Gula where you're coming from. I also am neighbor Mr. Agia being a voting member, so we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. After having, having a conversation with Chief, uh, Chief McGee, uh, so.
So I, that, so that, that addresses Mr. Gale's position as far as tonight, what's on the agenda, and we've got uh, another step if in fact, the chief and the committee agree.
Any further discussion, colleagues? I'm glad I looked up to see what the current membership was. I wouldn't even have, I wouldn't even have known how many people were on it, so I'm glad I did my due diligence on that. Hearing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. Selectman Gular?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye. Uh, Mr. Gale, thank you for being patient, more to come on this, okay?
Not, not at all, no worries, either way. Um, the only, the only comment I would make is that the Commonwealth does encourage towns to have their disability commission or their coordinator as a member of emergency preparedness. I, I've not specifically seen whether or not the Commonwealth prefers the individual to be a voting member or a non-voting member. I personally will tell you all, I'm fine either way. I think it's more about the input, and I think it's more about uh, getting the information uh, to other members of emergency preparedness and getting information from them that affects people with disability. So which, whichever way this goes, I think it's more important to have a seat at the table. It's not as important necessarily to have the vote.
Thank you, sir.
Right, and Mr. Gale, the only reason this came up is because when we realized there was another person that we think should be on there, that would give us a seven, seven-member board, and the, the seven-member board is not on the agenda tonight, so.
And, 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 and I heard that, Mrs. Gula, and I totally, you know, I respect that, it certainly makes sense. Um, you know, as, as opposed to having a tie, because then which way does the tie go? So I completely understand that, but I think it's my, my, my comment is, as noted already, was it, it's more about the value of the, of the input from, from both directions as opposed to the vote from both directions.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have a very sad resignation letter, so I'm gonna let one of my colleagues uh, read it, which, whichever one.
I have it up, so I'll, I'll read it. Uh, Dear Brett, Nancy, and Ken, it is with a very heavy heart that I am notifying the Board of Selectmen that I am retiring from the, my position as Dayton's Town Clerk as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas this is a very difficult decision, it is my obligation to this board that I notify you that there is a strong possibility that I will not be resigning in Dayton after March first, twenty twenty-one. As an elected official, I must live in Dayton's before my duties as Town Clerk, and I didn't want to put the board in a bad position if I was to leave with only a short notice. It's been a pleasure and extreme honor to serve the residents of the town of Dayton. And, and I would like to express my gratitude to all the department heads, all town employees, and my wonderful friends in the clerk treasurer's offices for their support throughout the last sixteen years. Pam, Mary, Helen, Christine, and Becky will always hold a very special place in my heart, but they will forever be my family at the town hall. I have loved serving in my position as Town Clerk, and I will truly miss everyone. I am so very grateful and blessed to have been given the support of the residents. If my services are not, I need, excuse me, if my services are needed to help with the transition, please don't hesitate to contact me. I wish everyone the best in the future, and please all stay well and safe. Very truly yours, uh, Sumideris.
Wow. Well, I, you know, before I entertain motions to accept um, Town Clerk Midiris's resignation letter effective February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, um, I just wanted to say how, I probably say this a lot, but it really has been such an honor working with her. Uh, I've learned a lot about uh, everything under the sun. Um, it was just nice to sit with uh, Town Clerk Midiris some days and just talk about what's going on and um, you know, she's been with the town for quite a while, and so she was able to be very instructive on different goings-on that she's witnessed um, in her tenure as Town Clerk. Um, and she is just truly uh, the epitome of just a, a, a fine and consummate uh, public servant, and um, I, I just, I will, I know you're not gone, uh, Mrs. Midiris, but I will, I will miss you incredibly when you are gone.
If I can just add to that also, I've known uh, Sumideris for a very long time. She worked at Princess House uh, with my wife for many, many years before she became a town employee. She was a great work event, she worked in human resources, and she's been a great employee of the town. I really think that we're gonna miss her in all the different things. We're not gonna realize how much different things she did for this town until she leaves. Uh, so, um, I'm very sad to hear this, and I wish all the luck.
I agree, it's um, this is a tough one. Um, I think what we all saw during the last uh, election year, there was, and, and dealing with the virus, the pandemic, there were so many almost day-to-day changes in how people were going to vote, and how far out you had to be to notify the residents that this is what you can do. And uh, it wasn't like the old days when everybody went to the poll and those that didn't got an absentee ballot. All of a sudden, uh, what we called absentee ballots became the norm, and it was thousands of people sending in, looking for those ballots, and um, and then also the recruitment and holding on to people to work at the polls. That was difficult too, because of the pandemic and everything else, but um, I, I give her a lot of credit for getting the town through that. It wasn't, it was not the normal election year. Uh, twenty twenty was just not a normal year anyhow. And, and dealing with the town meetings, and whether you were going to have it indoor or outdoors, and, and how far apart, and where the space was to do this. Um, so uh, you know, I certainly recognize that. Um, if this were just a letter of resignation, I'd make a motion not to accept it. However, it is notification of retirement, and quite frankly, even if refused, the fact that she files papers with Bristol County, it's a done deal. So um, along those lines, I will make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation for retirement purposes that we received from Town Clerk Susanna Midiris. With thanks, with regret for her leaving, thanks and appreciation, and best wishes on her retirement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Selectman Gular?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye, with thanks and appreciation, of course. Next, we have uh, to discuss the job posting for Town Clerk. Um, and so uh, bear with me just a moment. We did need to get a some clarification, I guess, from legal counsel on whether or not um, you have the, I guess how this successor is determined, and, and we'll leave it at that. And so they gave us an opinion dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and they said, dear members of the Board of Selectmen, this letter is in regards to the upcoming vacancy in the position of Town Clerk due to the retirement of Town Clerk Susanna Midiris, which is scheduled to occu- occur February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Under Mass General laws, the position of elected Town Clerk may only be filled by the voters. However, in our opinion, to address the intervening period between the retirement of Town Clerk and the next available election date, which is April tenth, twenty twenty-one, the selectman may appoint a person to fulfill the duties of interim Town Clerk. I'm sorry, it's not April twenty twenty-one, it would be when her term is uh, uh, vacant April twenty twenty-two, excuse me. In order to do so, the Board of Selectmen should advertise the interim Town Clerk position and hire the person they deem suitable to fulfill that role until the next available election, again, April twenty twenty-two. At the election, the voters would select a Town Clerk to serve out, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong. At the election, the voters would select a Town Clerk to serve out the remainder of the present Town Clerk's term. The person appointed by the selectman to be the interim Town Clerk should be a Dayton resident, because that is a requirement for the position. Please contact this office if you have any questions or concerns. I'm confused now because um, in the subsequent email from Town Clerk Midiris, she says this position would be an interim Town Clerk to finish out my term that expires in April twenty twenty-two. And I'm not sure that that's what the legal opinion is saying. Um, do my colle- what are the thoughts of my colleagues on this?
I agree, uh, the term expires in April twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
We're gonna be hiring somebody uh, to fulfill that position until that April twenty twenty-two, that person would have to run for election.
Correct.
And that person will be serving a full term. If whoever gets elected will be serving a full term in April, starting in April of twenty twenty-two.
I agree, and I think the reason why Selectman Pacheco that this is worded this way is because I, I think Town Clerk Midiris had mentioned something about the, it's too late to, or, or like, add a position onto the ballot?
That's right. It can't be on the April thing.
Okay, so I, that's why I'm reading this, I'm getting confused, but now I, I recalled that piece of information.
When she was appointed, she was appointed to fill the unexpired term.
Of her predecessor.
Mrs. Her, uh, Mrs. Herbeck, I think it was, resigned, she took a job somewhere else. So Mrs. Midiris was appointed to complete the term
Mm-hmm.
and, and then run again. Um, that was also the case when we had um, a vacancy in treasurer collective. We appointed somebody until the next election. In this case with Mrs. Midiris, you can't add it to the ballot to vote on it next April. It's got to be the following.
Uh, is it, it's okay. Uh, I would like to read, uh, before I read the job posting and we vote on that, can I read uh, Mrs. Midiris's uh, email to us dated January twenty-first, and this is in the packet. Good morning. Per my conversations with Brett, me, and Matt Costa, Town Council, the following is the information that I hope will be helpful in filling the Town Clerk position. My professional opinion is that this position would need to be filled by the Board of Selectmen after going through the interview process, which uh, Town Clerk Midiris, I want the residents of Dayton to know, is going to be involved in. Um, and we, and we really appreciate uh, her helping. I, I mean, she is just still giving her time to the town. My professional opinion is that um, this position would be an interim Town Clerk to finish out my term that expires in April twenty twenty-two. As mentioned by Town Council, this individual would need to be a Dayton resident, whereas it is an elected position. Back in August two thousand four, as Selectman Gular was alluding to, I was appointed uh, to finish the term that was vacated by then-Town Clerk Brenda Herbeck. Brenda was elected in April two thousand four, and I served as an appointed Town Clerk until the Town Clerk position was on the ballot in two thousand seven. Wow, that's like, two and a half years. Unfortunately, the deadlines for this year's town election have been posted, and those deadlines cannot be changed, which is, again, is what we were discussing. It has been an honor to serve as Dayton's Town Clerk. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Best always, Sumideris, Dayton Town Clerk. The job posting um, is as, you know, it is in the agenda. I want my colleagues to be aware that Town Clerk Midiris already has a job description, um, which I believe the board has already approved when we did those job descriptions all together. Um, so she has that, and then I asked her to please assist uh, our office in generating a job uh, posting, and this is what they came up with, and it says, Town Clerk, the town of Dayton has an immediate opening for an energetic, I love that they put that word in, by the way, an energetic Town Clerk to work under the direction of the Board of Selectmen and in conformance with applicable provisions of the town's bylaws, Massachusetts general laws, and federal laws with accountability to townspeople, state, and federal agencies. The role of the Town Clerk includes, but is not limited to, planning and conducting all elections, preparation of polls, ballot boxes, voting machines and ballots, instructing election officials as to election laws and procedures, issuance of absentee ballots, processing of all election ballots, and reporting results to the Secretary of State, advising Board of Voter Registration and all voter registration functions, bachelor's degree in business management, records management, public administration, or a closely related field, and three years of experience, preferably in municipal government. Please visit www.dighton-ma.gov under employment and volunteer opportunities to view job posting and description. Applicants should email a cover letter, resume, and application in PDF form to lcurwen@dighton-ma.gov or mail or in person to the Office of the Board of Selectmen, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. zero two seven one five. Applications due by February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Applicants are strongly advised to read the job description before applying. Just to um, tie this all together, uh, Selectman Pacheco and Selectman Gular, I have discussed this extensively with uh, Executive Assistant Karen Brady and Town Clerk Midiris. We feel like we can post this, you know, as soon as tomorrow, if approved by the Board of Selectmen, collect applications through that February eleventh, twenty twenty-one deadline, and then that gives Mrs. Brady, uh, Mrs. Midiris, and perhaps a, a third relevant person time to go through those applications, interview the applicants that they deem um, strong candidates for this role. And then we can appoint, potentially, and again, I'm throwing in the word potentially, because I'm certainly not binding our hands, but if we don't, if we wanna have a Town Clerk on March first, twenty twenty-one, then I will put this on the February twenty-fourth agenda, okay?
Yep.
Appoint a new Town Clerk. Does that timeline work for my colleagues?
It does for me.
Um, the third person might be the town administrator if, if he's available. If not, then, you know, probably a member of the Board of Selectmen would be the other one.
Are we gonna pick a straw? Are we straw picking for that? The shortest, the shortest stick gets the uh, I'm just joking. Um, we can, we can cross that bridge. Honestly, if, if, if any of you feel like you want to do it, I'm okay with that. Um, I have no, I'm totally happy not being in the interview room.
Um, I've got a couple of uh, I'd like to propose a couple of additions to the job description of the posting.
Yep.
Third sentence, fourth sentence from the bottom, applicants should email a cover letter, resume, and application in P B, in PDF form. form, along with names of three references to. I think we need to ask for references because that way, when they come in and you go through the the process of picking those you're going to interview, you'll have names of people to contact to get written references. And those obviously can be emailed in so that when the final presentation is given to the Board of Selectmen, we'll have a complete package. This is kind of going back to what I said to Bernie tonight about, I don't like anonymous references, but I think letters of reference are important. So I suggest that. The other thing, the other sentence I would add at the very end. Appointee must be bondable. People need to know that upfront. If for some reason you cannot be bonded, you can't hold this position. So that's an important one.
I agree.
Mrs. Brady, will we be able to add that, add those two revisions in before we post tomorrow?
Absolutely, we can do that.
You know, assuming obviously the board approves it as amended. Selectman Goulart, can you make a motion on those amendments, please? And then we'll have a motion and a vote on the
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following two additions be made to the posting for town clerk. In the fourth line, it's where it says applicant should email a cover letter, resume, and application in PDF form, along with the names of three references to. And there's an email address there for Ms. Kerwin. Do you get that, Mrs. Brady? Along with the names of three references? Okay. And the second one is the due date, if you're talking about that, the last line, advice to read the job description before applying. The last sentence should read, appointee must be bondable.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the amendments. Any further discussion?
Just briefly, Mrs. Goulart, so you don't want letters of recommendation, you just want the names of three references.
Right. So that, let's say you get fifteen applicants and you go through them all and you get it down to five or three, however, however many people you're actually going to interview. Those would be the people you'd contact references and just say, you know, so and so has applied, we would like your, and they mentioned you as a reference, would you please send us something? That way we don't end up with tons of paperwork for everybody.
Well, I think it's a good idea just because this will speed up the process. They won't have to wait to send an email to ask for the three references, and that will take, you know, a day or so I think it makes sense to include that, especially given the time constraints that we're under on this. So good, good suggestions, in my opinion, Selectman Goulart, my humble opinion, not that, not that it matters. Do we have any more discussion on the amendments, team?
I don't.
Hearing none? Let's take it to a vote. Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrapos is an aye. Now I will entertain motions on the job posting as amended. Job posting for town clerk is amended.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, excuse me, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco? And Selectmen Zagrapos is an aye. Sorry, old habits die hard. Next, review, discuss, and act. Fly gay pride flag at Town Hall. So I just wanted to start by, I know we had briefly discussed this at the end of like a very long department head meeting. I apologize. I must have, I clearly misunderstood our, I don't know, consensus or agreement. So I did put this on the agenda tonight. As everyone knows, I did receive, and I don't think I was the only person, unfortunately, who received a, I don't even, I'm trying to find the adjective to describe that email. I don't even have one. It was, it was
Nasty.
Yeah, hate-filled, I guess, would be the only word that I could use to describe it. And so it was very, very homophobic. I mean, that was the whole, not just, not just against LGBTQ people. It was against, I mean, even people that are friends with LGBTQ people or family of, it was
There was also a religious connotation in the subject line, so I think all three of us got it. Mine ended up in spam, so I deleted it. As I told you, and when you followed it, I read two lines and said, that's enough for me. But it was, let's say it covered quite a few people as far as personal preference, religious belief, or it just, it was just nasty.
I totally agree. And so I wanted to turn that negative into a positive, and so that's why I put flying a gay pride flag on the agenda for tonight. If it's okay with everyone, I did receive some correspondence in favor and not in favor, so is it okay? Actually, let's go to you and then I can always read that, you know, when we get into it.
So I'll speak first. So I refer to the email that you got to the Human Rights Commission. We're meeting this Wednesday. We're going to discuss this. We had an MMA conference last week, and it was one of the workshops that I attended was on networking, on diversity. And I spoke to, it's not Maureen, but it's Maureen, Maureen, but who is a counselor in Wakefield. And she said they had a similar situation. They have flown the gay pride flag for the last two years in the month of June, which I personally feel that's how we should do it. But she also said that they have a flag policy, and I think we need to come up with a a flag policy. I know that in the past we've discussed this about when we should put the flag at half-staff, who should it be, that kind of stuff. But you ought to come up with a, some kind of a policy. I think we have to make a statement as a result of that email. I think by every June, we're posting, or we're putting up the gay pride flag, we're sending a message to the community. But we get, I went on the internet today, looked at how different towns are handling this, and some towns have been sued for putting up certain types of flags. For example, one town had police, what's?
Like the thin blue line flag, Selectman Pacheco?
I've challenged that, and the town had to take it down. Some fire departments would put it on their vehicles, and they were sued, and they ended up having to take it down. So we've got to be careful as to what flag that we put up. Some people were offended. Some people, unfortunately, some people see that flag as a racist flag because some people are attached to that. It's like the American flag. I don't want to go off on a tangent, but it's like the American flag. Some people have stolen the value of the American flag. Now, I've had my flag pole up for eighteen years now. And because some people are missing chippa what the American flag stands for, doesn't mean I'm going to take it down. So we just have to be careful. I've been involved also in a revolutionary militia group, not the militia that we're talking about now, but it's something that does, a group that does reenactment. And some people have stolen those flags that were used at that time. So we've got to be careful as to what flags we're putting up. I feel strongly that we should be putting this flag up. I feel strongly we should come up with a policy so that everybody just can't say, hey, I want this flag up this week or whatever. But I definitely would support flying a gay pride flag for the month of June if they're doing that towards anything. We have a lot of people, and we have some people in town that should say that this would mean a lot to them. And I come from a generation in the sixties where life for a gay person was very difficult. People got married that were gay, married a heterosexual because they didn't want the community to use. Some people had, you know, didn't get married, but it was that strange uncle that people called him a strange uncle. So I think we've got to make a statement that we're not taking rights away from anybody. We're just letting everybody know that these people have rights and that we're proud of who they are. And as a town, we want to make sure that they feel comfortable in our community. So I know I've gone a little bit about this, but I feel proud that we should put the flag up in the month of June.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart?
I agree with what Selectman Pacheco said. As far as we need a policy, the town of Fairhaven, the town of Chelmsford, and I did see the reference to Wakefield, they ran into problems. It's a whole new area. We do need to have one, a flag policy. I think we have to be very careful about flag etiquette. The only flags that can fly on the pole out front is the American flag and the POW flag. You can't add more flags to that pole. So we've got to figure out where we're going to fly it, or if it's going to be, it could be on the building. The policy should indicate what the criteria would be for placing a flag there to commemorate, I'll say, a month or an event or something like that. We certainly don't want to support the kind of hatred that was in that, that email. But by the same token, there will be other groups who will ask to have their flags flown or placed or displayed or whatever. So, and I agree, we've got to follow proper American flag etiquette. I've seen some of the flags. There's only one American flag. It is red, white, and blue. I've seen the flags that are the black, blue, and white. I've seen the American flag with a dock strip through it. And I understand what people are saying, but you know what? Personal opinion, and people may be offended, that's desecration of the American flag. There is only one. Whether it's got fifty stars or fifty-one or how many more we may get in the future. And any markings on that flag or any change in the coloration of that flag, if it's not the official flag designated by Congress, the government, it's just wrong. And getting back to what we're talking about, I like the idea of a policy. And we can get when we discussed this the last time, Selectman Pacheco had said, we should send this to the Human Rights Committee. I thought that was a great idea. I'm glad we have that committee, quite frankly. They can contact other communities and get sample flag policies that have been adopted, that have been accepted, and they can get information on how to deal with if there is an organization that's truly not meeting the requirements of the flag policy, they can refuse to fly the flag. But as I say, I just think that that's probably the best route to go. And then it can come back. We'll have a recommendation from the Human Rights Committee. It can come back to the Board of Selectmen. We can put it on the agenda. We can get public input. People will have a chance to review the policy like we do with all our policies, you know, we announce them ahead of time and all that. But that way, I think we will treat people fairly. There will be inclusion. There won't be hatred and bigotry and whatever else is out there. But people will be treated fairly. And again, the important thing is follow flag etiquette for the US flag and the POW MIA flag. So I'm in agreement with where, this has been referred at this point.
Thank you.
If I can just add to that, I also feel that it should be flown on a separate flag pole in front of the Town Hall, not to take away from the American flag, the MIA flag, but the pole to represent what the town stands for.
Thank you, sir. I did just want to say, someone had sent me this, so I just wanted to read it, that our current, the Secretary of State nominee, Tony Blinken, has said that US embassies will be permitted to fly the pride flag and that he promised to reaffirm that the international principles of non-discrimination should apply to gender identity and sexual orientation. So I just wanted to make the point that flying this flag, it's not political. It's not a political flag. It's not a thin blue line flag. It's not a thin red line flag. These are not people's jobs. These are actual human beings who are demanding, are asking for equal rights, equal human rights. So I just wanted to make that distinction that this is not a political flag. It is a statement of values that we don't discriminate, et cetera. I do want to get to public input. I know Ms. Duszkowski has public input. I did want to go to Mr. Gale, who had his hand up, sir.
I guess, so what I was going to say, and thank you for giving me thirty seconds here. One of the reasons we moved to Dayton, and we've been here just over four years now, and one of the things that drew us to Dayton overall was the constant conversation we heard from local residents when we were considering the town about inclusion and diversity. And, you know, I've, I've seen that in a lot of different ways in the town, and whether it's for people with disability or people who want to express themselves, or people who are straight or people who are gay, it doesn't matter. I've seen the diversity in the town, and that's one of the things that drew us here. It's one of the things that keeps us here. I support the concept of the flag one hundred and ten percent. I personally would like to see, if it were up to me, it would fly as high as it could possibly be on the top of the Town Hall. Unfortunately, in the world we live in, that would be offensive to a lot of people, and I totally understand that side of it. I do think that besides just developing policy, the town needs to get legal opinion on the policy as well, and legal opinion from Town Council, to me, is because I would like to see whether it's a gay pride flag or potentially other types of flag have a permanent location in the town. I think, you know, in the State House, you have the Hall of Flags. Well, you know, Dayton could have the whatever of flags, you know, the parking space of flags, and I'm being facetious, but I think there's got to be a space and a place where different groups who want to be able to express themselves or have a flag that represents who the community is, that's nonviolent, that's non-threatening, can have a place to have the flags displayed on a permanent basis. I don't even think it should have to be because it's over a certain month or a certain period. And I think to have a flag in a place where people can see it, clearly, it shows the diversity of the town. It lets people driving through down one thirty-eight, whatever, know what the town represents. And you know, overall, although may not, everyone may not agree, it tells the the community at large that this is what the town stands for, and this is what the town certainly supports. So I'm for it, one hundred and ten percent. I just do think that we need to consider the legal aspect of it. I'm concerned about the groups who might say, well, if you have that flag, what about my flag? And I think that's why the policy is so important, and it has to have certain parameters on what it represents. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment.
Of course.
Since I brought up flag etiquette, no flag can fly higher than the US flag. So it's not going to be on the roof, Mr. Gale. That's another thing. When you fly flags, the US flag is the highest one.
Did we, Ms. Duszkowski?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm very familiar with flag etiquette. My brother has served several terms in the US Marine Corps and taught me a lot about flag etiquette. That being said, I want to express that flying the pride flag one month a year is not adequate. People are people every day of the year, every day of their lives. And to show that our town is an open and welcoming and accepting environment for all people, regardless, is extremely important. When I was young, you know, there were things that weren't talked about. And some teachers in the school that I attended had stickers on their doorways, right? And so you would know that that particular classroom was a safe place where you could go and you could talk to that teacher, and that was a safe adult for you. I feel very strongly that flying the flag at Town Hall makes a statement that this is a safe town for you, that this is a safe place for you, that you are accepted, you are welcomed and supported, and that you can come into Town Hall and be part of the space there and be civically engaged. We want to promote more engagement, and I really feel like flying this flag will have a huge impact on a lot of folks that may not even express to you the impact that it's going to have. And it certainly is going to set an example for future generations and for our youth. So I strongly encourage the board to consider it. I totally understand the idea of writing a flag policy. I think that that would be in the best input, I mean, in the best interest of the town. Just so that you're able to have equity across the board. But I do reject the idea of flying it just for one month of the year. This is not a holiday we are celebrating. These are people that we're celebrating. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Duszkowski. We also have public input from I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everyone. Um, thank you, Ms. Duszkowski. We also have public input from uh Mrs. Leah Quinn.
Hi there. I just wanted to ride on the coattails a little bit of Jen and Mr. Gale in saying that yes, one month is definitely not enough. Um, we need to rally around our neighbors in the community, in the gay community. We need to get a policy, absolutely. I am on board with that. I also think the public should be invited to these policy meetings and maybe included in how to write a policy, especially families with children who they are raising in this town that are part of the gay community. Um, I, I want to reiterate in the email that I sent to the board that we will not stand for less than every single person in this town being treated fair and equally.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinn. Uh, does anyone else uh have public input? If you do, uh, please just identify yourself and like your name and address, and then um you can unmute yourself.
There is somebody, but then mute there. Um, oh, there they are.
There you go.
This is Anne Maitzen. I am a member of the LGBT community. And one of the things, like Mr. Gale said, one of the things I found about this town was that people were, for the most part, open and accepting. And I agree with what my predecessor said, that June is insufficient. It really needs to be all the time. When people come to Dayton, they need to see that hate is not welcome here, that we're a town with diversity all around. Um, and I really support the flag flying twelve months out of the year. I agree the town needs a, a flag policy. But the pride flag represents more than just a, a special interest group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maitzen. Ms. Peterson, did you have something as well?
Hmm, Anne covered most of it.
Thank you.
She's a better speaker than I am.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further public input? You can unmute yourself, um, and then I just asked that you give your name and address. Okay, I, I did just, I would be remiss if I didn't read the public input that I had received via email. We got an email from Kim Gale on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, that said, I'm in support of flying a gay pride flag at town hall. I believe it shows our commitment to inclusion and diversity in our town. We received an email from Erin Andrade, who lives on uh Center Street. Ms. Gale lives in Waterford Circle, uh dated January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. He wrote, um, hi Brett, Derek and I both are in full support of a pride flag pride flag, excuse me, hanging at Dayton Town Hall. Thank you for all that you have done and continue to do for our town. Erin Andrade, Derek Latch. We received an email from Brendan Cunha, uh, and also Tom Karinski. Good evening, Selectmen Zagrafos. I saw your recent social media post about flying a pride flag at town hall year round, and I wanted to let you know I fully support it. As an LGBTQ resident of Dayton, I would love to see a symbol of equality and inclusiveness flown uh proudly for all to see in our town. And then we received this from Lisa Miner, who I believe is on the Human Rights Committee. I'm in, and this is dated January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. She lives on Elm Street. She writes, I'm in full support of Dayton Town Hall, flying a gay pride flag year round. This is an important way for our town to demonstrate to all that we support our LGBTQ community and do not tolerate discrimination against people because of their sexual preference or gender identity. And we did receive an email from uh Mrs. Quinn. It is a public record. It's on the Board of Selectmen's email. I won't read it since she already provided public input. We did receive public input from uh Mr. Wayne LaPage and Beverly LaPage of one seven zero or one seven six Cob Lane. He wrote uh issue concerning the placement uh of a gay pride flag at town hall. We are totally against this proposal. I see no practical reason for this flag uh to be posted. He must have, I, I don't think, I was told he doesn't have internet or um cable, so he clearly missed the hate email. Uh, we are also against Brett Zagrafos being appointed uh temporary town administrator exclamation point, exclamation point. We believe it is a conflict of interest. So thank you, Attorney uh LaPage. Is there any further public input?
I, I didn't think he was an attorney.
No, I would, that was, that was my, trying to be funny. You ruined the joke. Um.
Hit the joke.
So I, I just wanted to reiterate, um, I would love to see the, the pride flag um flown uh at town hall is uh during Gay Pride Month. That would be a big step forward. I would love that. That would make me very happy. But I want to be clear, this is not on the agenda for me. Uh, there were a lot of people that reached out to me who are not part of the LGBT co- community, who were hurt and offended by the email that went to all of our, my colleagues as well, public email addresses. Um, and I will also note, um, I agree we need a flag policy, but nobody has requested to fly a flag at town hall until I put this on the agenda. So we have not received any competing uh flag interest, I guess I'll call it. So with that being said, I will entertain motions regarding flying the gay pride flag at town hall. Please don't say so moved. You can phrase it or not in the way that you see fit.
Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we submit the request to fly the, to fly any flag at town hall, including the gay pride flag to the Human Rights Commission for a recommendation and also request that they prepare a draft flag policy and, and send it back to this board for review. And then we would follow our usual policy procedure, seeking public input.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
I just wanted, um, ju- just remind everybody that it will be a recommendation from the Human Rights, uh, as everybody knows, I'm a non-voting member of that committee. Uh, but it would, it would just be a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as to uh um, what we, what we recommended as far as a, a policy. I just, I sent them your, the email that you received and that we received so that we can discuss this. I didn't necessarily talk to them about uh having a policy, flag policy. So uh, we, we can do that. We'll come up with something. We'll make a recommendation. I do agree that we need public input. We, we seem to have a lot of support for flying uh the flag all the time, so it's something that we have to consider. I just think that once we fly that flag, there's gonna be other groups that are gonna want to fly the flag. Like I said, for Wakefield, they decided to do it for the month of June twice. Uh, there was somebody, uh, the person I spoke to, uh, said there was somebody who has been out of Wakefield for twenty years, came back into town, happened to be the month of June, lives in San Francisco, and was very impressed that the flag was up. So I think it's a, it's a very important thing, very important message that we have to give to townspeople and people who drive through our community, that we don't discriminate against um anybody. We, uh, my daughter lives in Sharon. The Unitarian Church flies a gay pride flag a hundred percent of the time. It means a lot to me when I see it. Uh, we all, whether you're aware of it or not, we all have family members who are gay or transgender or the other groups. So I don't want anybody to think that, you know, they're, they're not part, you know, they're not, they're not part of this. We don't want to discriminate against anybody. We're not seeing a group out there. You want, uh, this is a group that's been discriminated for a long, long time, and we want to make it clear to the public, the residents, people who drive through our town, that we don't allow them discrimination. So uh, we may very well come back with a recommendation that the flag be flown a hundred percent of the time. So.
Thank you.
Have you bought last night?
Thank you, sir. And, and I, can I add something? And I don't want to reveal too much information, because I don't want to steal the Human Rights Committee's uh thunder. But uh, I have been in touch with the Chair, uh, Mr. Cassidy of the Human Rights Committee, and I want everyone in, in, in the public, anyone who is watching this right now, to be aware that that committee is very active. They have requested um uh, like, uh, funds to do different things in this next fiscal year. Um, the specter of a, um, I don't, the, this is my word, please, not anyone else's, of a unity flag, something that um is inclusive, I, because I don't want to say the gay pride flag isn't inclusive. It is completely inclusive. But I'm taking into account other groups that may not be on that gay pride flag. That is something that's being discussed at the level of the Human Rights Committee as well. So I, I don't want anyone to leave here tonight with the impression um that the gay pride flag is the only thing being considered. Um, they are also seeking ways to uh perhaps make their own flag that's, that's Dayton-specific and also inclusive. So those conversations are happening as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Selectman Gula.
And the other thing too is, um, if the Human Rights Committee uh has difficulty trying to come up with a policy or something, um, we can add that to the list for the incoming town administrator.
Yeah. What's a long list, Selectman Gula? He has, he's been appointed.
Sign a list, Mrs. Brady, for our town administrator.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, Selectman Gula, roll call. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an I. Thank you to everyone who um gave an opinion either for or against. It's appreciated. Um, I just love seeing that people care about what their government is, is doing in their name. Um, and it's, it's very encouraging. So I just wanted to thank everybody for uh giving us their input. We are here to represent you all at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. Next, we're gonna discuss disciplinary actions for COVID uh violations. I have sought legal opinion uh from town council. Uh, Mr. Mullen has informed me he's taking notes, by the way. So he's already on the job, I guess. Um, and I would expect nothing less from him. Um, I asked for clarification from town council regarding if we had, let's say, and I'm speaking in generalities, and I want the public to know that now. I'm not speaking about any person or anything like that. If someone were to show up to work symptomatic with COVID, maybe even though they have it, are there, is there any recourse from the town perspective um in terms of discipline, disciplinary action? So I did ask town council to uh give us a legal opinion on that. And what they gave us um on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, that we'll be discussing tonight, is the following. On January fifth, you forwarded an email to Attorney Costa and myself concerning the above matter, which is, again, disciplinary actions for COVID violations. Chairman Zagrafos had asked a question about potential discipline if an employee shows up to work sick, sick with symptoms that could possibly be COVID-related. We believe, subject to deferring to Attorney Costa if he has already responded, and I don't believe he did, that disciplinary action is appropriate if the person shows up with symptoms, has not been tested, and has not quarantined. With all the news media coverage with COVID nineteen, it is reasonable to assume that employees know that it is improper to show up at work with COVID symptoms. And again, doesn't matter if you haven't been tested. What type of disciplinary action would certainly be, at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, a written warning for a first offense may be appropriate. Something more, if it's a flagrant violation, may also be appropriate. I'd be pleased to discuss this with Chairman Zagrafos at his convenience. And I just want my board colleagues to know, I did not follow back up with him, because we had not had a chance to discuss this together. Um, if I can just give my personal opinion, my personal opinion is, um, and I'm a person who really respects everyone. Um, we're really a team here in Dayton, even the employees amongst themselves. There's a lot of camaraderie and teamwork. I absolutely think that we should pursue disciplinary action for anyone who shows up to work with symptoms, period. I won't sugarcoat it. I won't even add to that. Obviously, the disciplinary action would depend on the violation, the nature, all the circumstances around that specific incident. But I think we need to keep our people safe. I think we're running on a very um shoestring in terms of our staffing. We can't afford people to be sick. We can't afford to be sick. Um, and I think we need to take this very, very seriously and consider all avenues for discipline if there is a violation. And with that, I, I will turn it over to my colleagues.
Well, I, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said. COVID nineteen is a very serious uh disease. We all know, um, people passed away as a result of it. Uh, we have to be very careful. I take my temperature every day. I'm in that age category, so I, I have to be concerned as well as uh concern for my wife. But we haven't had our kids over for Christmas, for Thanksgiving. I haven't hugged my grandchildren in nine, ten months, uh, so we're all sacrificing. So I think it's important, especially when we're given, we're allowing the employees to stay home if they have the symptoms or have COVID nineteen, without having to use their sick time. Not every town does that necessarily, but we've done that, and we've been in the forefront of that. So I, I am not opposed to disciplining anybody who comes in with any symptoms when it comes to COVID uh nineteen. I, I feel strongly about that. I've, I've asked that we not have public meetings uh because of COVID nineteen, and the board uh thankfully agreed uh with me. The town hall is closed to the public. I don't like that, but we have to do it to protect our employees. Uh, so uh, I'm a hundred percent with you on this, and I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Thank you. I was nervous that I was gonna get yelled at for wasting town council money on this. Selectman Gula.
Yeah, um, I agree, and um what I don't agree with in the letter is potentially a, a written warning. No, no. If somebody shows up with the symptoms, they don't have to have all of them. They, maybe they got the sniffles, or maybe they're saying, I got a split and headache. I think if that's observed by another employee or by the supervisor, it should be brought to the attention of the supervisor. And quite frankly, if it is the supervisor, I would hope somebody in that department would notify Mr. Pilling at the Board of Health, and certainly somebody in the Selectmen's office. Because written warning, forget it. If somebody comes in with symptoms, first step is you've got to go home. You cannot stay in this location. We all know you can work from home. And if, if the feeling is, but I'm not sick, take your work with you. You can go home and work. You need to leave this premises immediately. We strongly urge you to get tested and speak to our health agent about the results. We understand people still have privacy issues, but the only way we're gonna protect our people is to make, take immediate action beyond telling them to go home. If the violation, I'll call it, of the directive from the governor, I mean, can't get much higher than that on the other president or the CDC. If the violation is so flagrant, then we need to consider further discipline. But I think immediate action is the first thing we do. Um, and I think that it would be wise for the Board of Selectmen to talk to the health agent uh to get some guidelines on, and to let him know what our feelings are about sending somebody home immediately. If a sick child turns up at school, they send him home. They call the parents. They do whatever. Something that Mr. Pilling mentioned today before we had our uh Stormwater Committee meeting was one of the problems he's dealing with is people are sending children to school who are ill because they know they'll get tested. And if they have to do that on their own, they have to get an appointment. There may be a cost involved. And the thought that children may be being sent to school who are ill, uh, I, I find that very frightening. And certainly, we don't, on adults, our employees doing this. So uh, so I, yeah, I agree. We've got to do something. Um, but I think the first step is immediately send them home. Then we can talk about discipline beyond that.
Mm-hmm. So I don't, I don't think, oh, I'm sorry, Selectman Gula. You have the floor.
They're not gonna lose money. I mean, I think we've been very generous with our employees who have said they were ill, um, very understanding.
I, I, we voluntarily decided to extend eighty hours of employer-paid sick leave that doesn't come out of their accumulated sick bank, personal sick bank, or sick time. Uh, what more could we do? There's no excuse for anyone to be showing up, and I'm not saying it's happened. I'm not alluding to anything. Um, there's no excuse. That's all I'm saying. It should not happen. It cannot happen, and it will not happen. And so the next thing I want to ask my colleagues is, do we think it's appropriate to send to all Town of Dighton employees via email a recitation of this legal opinion? You know, we can reword it, obviously, but I think people need to be made aware that we take safety as the Board of Selectmen with the utmost importance and priority.
I think it's a good idea, and we can address it with employees as a preventative measure. It's an advisory upfront that if there is a report or an observation that somebody appears ill, they will be asked to leave the premises, wherever they are, immediately. And steps, yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so again, I don't think we need to, I think we're just reviewing. I think we're all in agreement. I don't think there's anything to actually vote on. So I think we're okay to move on, but I'm glad that we're all in agreement on this. Next is a change of hours for Rochelle's Market. And can someone else start this, because I'm going to have to flip and it's going to take me literally five minutes?
You want me to read it?
If you don't mind, Selectman Goulart, or Selectman Pacheco.
This is, this letter is dated January the 11th. From Atel Kumar Patel, 189 Greenbrier Drive, Seco. The subject matter is Certificate of Company Vote. Dear Sir/Madam, this is to certify that a special meeting of the Rochelle's Market Incorporated Company, held at the offices of the company located at 2050 County Street, Dighton, Mass. 02715. On January 2nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM, all the directors slash members, Atel Kumar Patel, being present and voting, it was unanimously voted requesting to change the hours on our current wines and malt beverages license. The current hours are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. New hours, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. By unanimous consensus, therefore, we shall move toward adopting the elements required by said vote. Kind regards, Atel Kumar Patel, President. And attached to it is the license application for the change.
I will entertain motions regarding, bear with me just a moment, regarding the proposed change in hours for Rochelle's Market.
Isn't Mike correct in that on Sundays they can't sell liquor till noon, beginning at noon time?
I think that is correct.
So I'm not sure how.
Johnny's Market opens up at 10 o'clock on Sunday.
Is it? I thought it was. Yeah, you could be right, I'm sorry.
I only know because I tried to get a newspaper and it was five minutes at 10 and everything was locked up. And I noticed.
Selectman Goulart, it's okay.
I had to drive down the road and find one that was open, that's right. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request of Rochelle's Market allowing the change of hours, the new hours being 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM as noted in the Wine and Malt Beverages License Application.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, my understanding is, once we vote this, it has to go to ABCC and they make a final decision?
And then we'll get notified, I believe, of their decision, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Included in this motion, can we also add that they open up at 6:00 on Sunday morning to sell the Melon Savage? Is that something?
You know what? You know, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking the motion, I think what they're asking for may not be correct if Johnny's, they told me at Johnny's Market, because when I went back the next day to get my paper, he said, "I saw you, I was in the back of the store, I was going to let you in." If they can't open until 10, they can't set hours from 8 to 11 if they're, because they're open on Sundays. So you know what?
Can I ask a question? Oh, Mrs. Brady may have clarification, Mrs. Brady?
So the 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM is Sunday only. And the 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM is the other days.
There's no six, it doesn't say that here.
They already have that stipulated on their license, so they're just looking to change the other days of the week until, to 8:00 AM rather than 11:00 AM.
But you said 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
That's for Sunday only, and they already have that stipulation on their license, on their.
What I'm saying to you is, they're saying that current hours are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. There should be an exception that says our hours are, whatever, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, except on Sundays, and those hours are whatever they are.
I think you're both saying the same thing. I think the reason they didn't put that on there is because they're not proposing to change Sunday's hours. It's staying 10 to what you said, Mrs. Brady, 6, I believe.
It's not clarified in the letter that they sent, and it's not clarified in the motion. So I think the motion should be that Monday through Saturday, their new for selling wines and malt liquor is 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. It remains the same.
If, okay, if you withdraw the second, I will withdraw the motion and start over again.
I withdraw the second.
Okay, and I withdraw the motion, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request of Rochelle's Market for a change in hours for the sale of wine and malt beverages to the following hours. 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM from Monday through Saturday. And, no, we can't do 8:00 AM, that's still not right.
The motion should be that we're agreeing to change the hours from Monday through Saturday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM to sell wine, wines and malt beverages.
So, are we going to reference the Sunday hours, is my question?
No, because they're not asking to change those.
Well, it's not that they're not asking for, but we can't change those hours on Sunday, so.
Yeah.
We're only doing Monday through Saturday.
Mrs. Brady, the, this application that was attached here, is this going to list the new hours? Because I don't see it on this form, maybe it's not complete. This is Retail Alcoholic Beverages License Application Monetary Transmittal Form. Does the current license list Monday to Saturday and separate hours for Sunday? I can't hear you. Mrs. Brady, can't hear you.
Their license does specify Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but the other days of the week currently say 10:00 AM.
To 11:00 PM.
Okay, let's say 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, let me try it again.
Hey, the third time's the charm, what are you apologizing for?
Next thing, when I go there, they better be open, I'm going to need. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to change the hours for Rochelle's Market from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM for Monday through Saturday operations with no change in the hours of operation on Sunday.
I'll second that.
Is that what we're trying to do?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart, please.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is aye. By the way, Mrs. Brady, are you using the former town administrator's laptop?
Yes.
To get that working, okay, good.
Yes.
Perfect, good, good, good. Next on the agenda tonight is Review, Discuss and Act, Reauthorize the Sursage Intermunicipal Agreement. And bear with me just a moment. Whoo, it takes me a moment. Okay, if it's okay, I'm just going to read this letter from KP Law. Sursage was first created by an intermunicipal agreement in or about 1996 pursuant to Section 2. This IMA was, quote, "For an initial term of three years and for successive terms of one year thereafter, unless terminated by a vote of the Sursage Board, subject always, however, to the rights of members to withdraw as hereafter provided." At the time of the agreement was first executed, however, the enabling statute, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 4A, limited the term of intermunicipal agreements to 25 years, including extensions. Although the statute has since been amended, the 25-year maximum term is still part of the statute. I'm waiting for this to get relevant to us, guys. Because we are coming up on the 25-year anniversary of the original IMA, I recommend that it be reauthorized by all parties so as to ensure that the actions of Sursage cannot be called into question. This is covering our butts, and I like this. Pursuant to state statute as amended, such action requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen in a towns, in a towns, in towns, and a vote of the city council with the approval of the mayor in cities. To that end, I recommend the following motion. Our legal scholar, Selectman Goulart, this is for you. Well, I love that they did it for us. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Services Group, Sursage, so as to extend the term of that agreement for a period of 25 years from February 1st, 2021, subject to any rights of termination or withdrawal, with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change, and to authorize, I guess me, the chairman, or the clerk, whoever, to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
No move.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I just want to clarify. This person really is going to be the town administrator. I mean, Madam, former Town Administrator Ernestine was very instrumental in getting us into Sursage, and I know she was handling a lot of this stuff. So who do we want to be the person who authorizes the execution of any documents?
Well, this, this is, this particular document is like a contract. Therefore, it would have to be, unless otherwise designated on the form, it would have to be Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I figured as such, yeah. Any further discussion?
Yeah, where were they when I needed them on the previous?
We can't afford KP Law. Hearing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco. And Selectman Zagrafos, aye. And it figures, right when I get into a rhythm, Mr. Higgins isn't here to see how well I'm doing. It's okay. Next on the agenda, under New Business, and last, is for us to review, discuss and act on the FY 2022 Board of Selectmen's budgets. Is it okay if we have a very brief two-minute recess so everyone can, at least my colleagues, do we want to take just two minutes, water, whatever we need to do?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Before we get into the budgets, okay. So we'll resume around 9:08 PM, 9:09.
Okay.
Okay, everyone. Thank you for being patient with our recesses. It's a long meeting, and we always know budget discussions can be lengthy. Maybe not for ours, but just to be on the safe side, I thought a break was fitting. So, Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Kirwin and I met because we needed to get the Board of Selectmen's budgets in by the January 31st deadline that we imposed on everyone. So we did. We were able to get everything done in about one, you know, one or two-hour meeting. And here's what we have before you. And so I just, I just thought we could start like budget by budget, and so we could start with 113 Town Meeting. And so it looks like this is pretty much the same, it's level funded. And so I think what we can do, Selectman Pacheco and Selectman Goulart, is for each budget, we can have a vote on that particular account, I guess we'll call it. So are we comfortable with level funding 113 Town Meeting?
Yes, I so move. I move that we level fund the Town Meeting budget for $200.
So do I hear a second? Oh, Selectman Goulart, I'm sorry, she's me, I was wondering, I saw your lips, and then I'm like, oh, I'm not doing anything, I'm sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, roll call, please, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye. Next is 114 Town Moderator. The only change you should see here is the $10 in the salary line, which is a 2% increase. I know, I guess my question for us is, I believe last year, correct me if I'm wrong, please, didn't Finance Committee, didn't we not do any 2% for elected officials?
That's correct. That's correct.
And I guess my question for the board is, are we, do we want to do that again? I, I'm gonna be honest, I know this is gonna be, gonna make me gain any friends, but I really feel like we're in a pandemic, and if you speak to any of the town administrators in other towns, or any of the town accounts, they all feel like this FY twenty-two is gonna be the hardest. And so I truly think if we're gonna need every penny, it's gonna be FY twenty-two, and I think we can justify, or it's justifiable to not have those two percent salary increases. And I don't care that it's only ten dollars. I'm just thinking collectively, it does make a difference. It does add up.
Yes.
But I'll respect everyone, if that's not what we come to.
On account number one fourteen-town moderator, that we level fund that at the total amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries, roll call, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. Mrs. Brady, I know you have access to the master budget sheet. Uh, maybe you and I can get together tomorrow during the day, and we can, um, you know, socially distance, obviously, but you and I can get in there and, um, update the Google Sheet.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Next, we have our budget, uh, which is one twenty-two. And there were, um, you know, there are some changes, so I would rather just have you guys ask whatever questions that you have, uh, for either myself or Mrs. Brady about it.
Do the salary lines reflect uh, collective bargaining agreements where they're applicable?
So, yes, uh, in the sense that not so much collective bargaining, but Mrs. Brady's, you know, uh, the, excuse me, the executive assistant's two percent, um, increase is in there. For, um, Mrs., excuse me, for the administrative assistant, I'm sorry, I have to get out of that, for the administrative assistant role, um, the reason it's a nineteen point nine percent increase is because, um, you recall, we gave Mrs. Kirwin, um, service credit. So we had to factor that into the budget, and then also the two percent on top of that. And so, and then, um, we're also thinking, based on just the last year's work, um, we may need additional hours for her. Um, I know just in the three months since, um, Town Administrator Aaronstein left, um, there were times that, uh, Mrs. Kirwin, um, it was just me and Mrs. Kirwin. Um, and she and Mrs. Brady, if they two were not there, I honestly can tell you, I do not know how we would have gotten through the last three months. I want to also say, half of the reason we need extra hours for the administrative assistance specifically is having the remote meetings, and not, and having her be the master account means that every time someone wants to make a meeting, or post a meeting, or since town hall is closed, all of that comes into Mrs. Kirwin. Um, and so, you know, I, I'm okay with whatever the board decides, as always. Um, but I wouldn't personally, in a pandemic, request the five hours if I didn't see with my own eyes that we really need it.
Does she, uh, is the administrative assistant, um, in the union?
No.
Okay, all right, fine.
Sort of like, it's sort of like the executive assistant, um, Selectman Goulart, where
She's a confidential employee.
Correct, yeah.
So on this, so back to my original question, there's nobody on this page that's covered under a collective bargaining agreement, so we don't have to be concerned about the, okay, all right.
Nope.
So, um, my question is on the passport stipend. Now, we're not paying Karen O'Leary and that stipend, is this money for the library that's coming out of our budget? The thirty-nine hundred dollars?
Yes, she, uh, Mrs. Brady's saying yes, uh, Selectman Pacheco.
Oh, okay. That's my only question, question concern.
And I did just want to add that the increase in FY twenty-one over F, into FY twenty-two, again, is mostly the hours and the credit, the service credit, the five extra hours for the administrative assistant and the service credit. So I did just want to emphasize that as well.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the account, account number one twenty-two for the Selectmen's, uh, budget, uh, for a total of one hundred. I printed it small, so there was eighty-one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, if that, if that's correct.
Yeah, it's hard to read.
I have, and Mrs. Brady, correct me if I'm wrong, because my, my eyesight is not good. One hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, six sixty-eight seventy-seven.
I amend my motion to read that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. Next, we have one twenty-four-town administrator. Obviously, the big question mark for, uh, the three of us when we got together was how much do we put in the budget line for the salary for the town administrator? And I'm gonna be honest, I just went with what was originally approved at the town, I think it was twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen-town meeting, when they recreated the position and refunded it, it was at a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. I fully understand that our previous town administrator was at one fifteen, more or less, but there were some other extra things, um, in their contract at that time. So I'm willing to, I, I don't think, maybe I'm, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but I didn't necessarily think that that's what we would offer the next town administrator in their first year of their contract, but I did just want to have a little bit of playing room, not really being able to obviously talk to you beforehand, uh, my Selectmen colleagues, um, but fully understanding that it may be, um, amended down. And with that, I will, uh, yield the floor.
Did we advertise a hundred and fifteen in the job description?
Plus or minus, yep.
I have no questions.
Um, my only thought is, since a hundred and fifteen thousand was mentioned, I don't think we can go to one twenty-five.
Well, it was like, in the advertisement, Selectman Goulart, it had a plus or minus in front of it, meaning it may be plus or minus a hundred, meaning more or less. So there was some wiggle room in the way that community paradigm associates, associates, excuse me, advertised it.
And the other thing is that, uh, we're gonna be negotiating a contract with the new town administrator soon. We'll have a better idea as to what kind of monies we're talking about.
We can change this.
Uh, we can change this as we
Yeah. Yeah. Once we have more clarity, that's a good point.
So I want to make a motion that we approve the town administrator's budget, which is account number one twenty-four, uh, for a total of one hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I just wanted to, um, point out that everything else was level-funded, except, you know, the two percent for the executive assistant, which she deserves. Um, so, thank you. Um, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. One fifty-one-town council, well, I can tell you, uh, one thing in, with great confidence, Selectman Pacheco and Selectman Goulart, we will be using less of town council when our new town administrators and I bet you Attorney Costa is very happy to hear that. So we did bump this up slightly, given that information, given the fact that, you know, in the interim, I basically had Attorney, uh, Costa on speed dial, because, you know, I, I don't want to put the town, obviously, in any kind of uncompromising, uh, position. We want to have, you know, we want to be guided with the best advice, always. So, um, I don't know how you take the slight fourteen percent increase, but I'm, I'm all ears.
Yeah, I, I don't mind the fourteen percent increase, it doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, obviously, because it changes every year, so I want to make a motion, uh, that we approve account number one fifty-one-town council uh, budget for fifty thousand dollars.
Second, um, excuse me, second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. One fifty-five data processing, we level funded this, um. We do end up using close to what we budget, but I think we feel confident that, um, this should be enough, what's here is enough for the next fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number one fifty-five, uh, data processing at the total amount of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco? And Selectman Zografos is an aye. One ninety-two, public buildings and properties maintenance. This is, uh, actually slightly less than what was, um, it's basically level-funded, but a little bit less than FY twenty-one's request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number one ninety-two, public building and properties maintenance, in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, if I read that correctly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. Next is one, uh, account one ninety-three, building insurance, and it looks like we're le, uh, we've requested a level-funded budget for this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number one ninety-three, building insurance, for a total amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's, uh, take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. Next, we have, and this is town reports, right?
Yes.
One ninety-five, uh, this is going to be a level-funded request for FY twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for town number one ninety-five, town reports, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye as well. For nine twelve workers' compensation, we have requested fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five, uh, dollars, which is slightly up from what we requested in FY twenty-one, which was, uh, a flat fifty-five thousand. And a lot of it did get spent, um, so we, that's why, um, we thought about adding just a wee bit more for FY twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number nine twelve workers' compensation, in the amount of fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, this is subject to an annual audit, so it may go up, I don't think it'll go down, but, uh, uh, we may have to revisit this one.
That doesn't mean we're not hoping it goes down, which is realistic. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote, Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is also an aye. Nine twenty tuition, now, please don't balk at, uh, it's a big increase, a three hundred fifty percent increase, but I just, I need to explain to my colleagues, who I think, I think you know I, and also to the public. We allotted for FY twenty and for FY twenty-one, four thousand dollars for this tuition reimbursement account. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the policy that the Board of Selectmen adopted, um, states that each, uh, first of all, whether someone receives or is eligible for tuition reimbursement depends on whether there's money in the account. That's point number one. Point number two is, because we're not, uh, because we didn't, we, meaning the town, didn't calculate during the fiscal budget preparations last fiscal year, how many employees may potentially pursue this program, the tuition reimbursement program? There was not enough money in there to pay out some of the reimbursement requests. And so what I have done this year, and, and I want to say that concerns me only because I think we all believe in this program, and I, I feel like if we don't, uh, ensure during budget season that there are the appropriate funds in there to reimburse people who use this program, then it sort of undermines the program, because my rationale would be, if I'm unsure whether I'm gonna get reimbursed, I may be less likely to take the courses, of course. So what we did this budget season is, I contacted department heads who I thought or knew, they had employees who wanted to utilize the program, and then I multiplied that by the three thousand dollar per person maximum cap that's allowed in the fiscal year for potential reimbursement. And so that's how we arrived at this number. I think there were six employees who had expressed potential interests, and again, this is all potential, we don't know what will happen, we don't know if those employees will actually eventually take the courses and then get the sufficient grade to earn the reimbursement. But what that is, is eighteen thousand dollars covers a potential three thousand dollar reimbursement for each employee who has expressed interest. And so that's why there's such a big increase over the previous two fiscal years, because a flat dollar amount was put in the account, not taking into account whether that would cover someone who may reach the three thousand dollar maximum cap. And so I just wanted to explain both to my colleagues and to the public why there was such a big increase in this line, in this request, excuse me, over the prior fiscal years.
So we have potentially six employees that might take advantage of this?
We do, which I know that's a lot of money, I'm, please understand, I'm not, eighteen thousand dollars is a pretty penny, we all know that. What made me proud when I heard that six people wanted to do this, or were even thinking about it, is that the word is getting out that this is something that's to the benefit of the employee, it also happens to be the bene, to the benefit of the town, to have a more knowledgeable or more educated, higher level, higher, uh, learning, uh, education. And so that made me a little bit happy, although I know eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of money.
I think it's great, because this is what we hoped would happen when we started out with one, and then we got two, so if there's potential for more out there, um, I think it's good.
Well, two of them were Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin as well, so I was very happy to hear that they were interested.
So the public should know that they have, they get the tuition reimbursement if it's related to the, the field that they're working in. So you can't be, have one position, and you want to become a teacher, so you take up, get a bachelor's degree in teaching, in history, uh, we don't cover that, this is something that's related to the field that they're working in presently. So I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number nine twenty tuition, for the total amount of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and, and I will continue to keep the feelers out until we, like, officially approve this budget. If there's a seventh or an eighth out there, just to sort of cover it, right? I will do my due diligence, any further discussion? I will do my due diligence. Any further discussion?
I, I think, um, I think, uh, just to add a little bit to what Selectmen Pacheco said, related to their field, uh, and, um, in a program of studies that, that is directly related to the field. And the other thing is, and that required courses, required as part of the program by the institution be covered. Cause I remember a few years ago, there was a question about whether or not somebody could get reimbursed. Well, we all know, besides required courses, you have electives. You must take electives, and you might look at it and say, well, what, what does earth science have to do with whatever? The fact of the matter is, those are your free choices, but you must make the choice, because if you don't, the institution is not going to award the degree or whatever it is. So, so, um, related and required courses of study are what's, what's important, and which, which we followed.
That is a really good point, and thank you. I appreciate that. Any furth- anything else under this before we take it to a vote? All right. And again, sorry, we're voting on 920 Tuition. Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Thank you, um, colleagues. I know it's a lot of money, but, um, again, I doubt all of it would obviously be spent. Most, a lot of it may go back into the general fund, but at least it's there for someone who, who wants to advance themselves in their career. Under settlements, do we all agree that we're okay with 940 being at zero again? So, I will entertain a motion for, uh, level funding 940 at zero.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget of, um, account number 940 settlements, level funding zero.
And could I just add on 941 Court Judgments?
Oh, yes, please.
Both the two of them. And I'll second that motion.
Yes, for 940 and 941, motion and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. 945 Liability Insurance. Uh, and, uh, bear with me a moment. This is level funded from FY21.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for account number 945 Liability Insurance at level funding $125,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mrs. Brady, do we know what the additional premium is going to be for the training range? The training facility, uh, that the police department has?
Had that figured yet. You may have to revisit this one also.
Well, to my colleagues, what happened was when I met with, uh, the chief, uh, police chief and Mr. Ferry, and we talked about this. Mrs. Brady, uh, gave us a copy of the agreement that we have with the city of Totten, which holds the town of Dayton harmless. In other words, they have liability for their own people. However, in the course of looking into this further, we found out that in the past, uh, this was not listed separately on the town's insurance policy. I think it was assumed it was just covered. The, uh, insurer has advised Mrs. Brady that it will be listed separately. We didn't, we didn't pick up an additional premium for this year. But with the renewal of this policy, there could be a additional amount, and it will be listed separately. So, we may have to revisit this, just to keep you appraised on this particular issue.
Thank you. And, um, as you know, Selectmen Goulart, we, as the Board of Selectmen, begin meeting with, um, different boards and department heads, et cetera, in March. And so, maybe we'll have a little bit more clarity on that by then, and then we can revisit that, you know, particular budget when we have a little bit more info, okay?
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up, though. That's a good point. Uh, next, we have correspondence.
We get a vote.
And a more sad correspondence. I'm, I'm over the sad news tonight.
We get a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are correct. Any further discussion? Thank you, Selectmen Goulart.
Welcome.
Hearing none, um, and this is 945 Liability Insurance. Uh, Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Thank you for keeping me on track. Uh, next, we do have a sad email, which I am not going to read, because I've had enough sad news. Do either of my colleagues want to read the email from Mr. Silva regarding his decision not to seek reelection?
I'll read it. Sure, sweet. Uh, this is from Joseph Silva Jr., who is a member of the Board of Assessors, 1668 Pine Street, Dayton, dated January the 8th. It's addressed to Pamela J. Waller, Assistant Town Clerk at the Town Hall. Dimas Waller, I have decided not to run for reelection, Board of Assessors, in the next annual town election on April 10th, 2021. It has been my pleasure serving the people of Dayton for the last 12 terms, 36 years. Sincerely, Joseph Silva Jr. Wow is right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the notification from Joseph Silva Jr., Board of Assessors, that he is not going to run for reelection in the, on the April, April 10th, 2021 ballot, with thanks and appreciation for 36 years of service.
I'll second that.
Wow.
We have a second, uh, motion and a second. Excuse me. I, I just wanted to add, um, I ha- had the pleasure of speaking to, um, our current assessor, Mrs. Beauregard, about, um, Mr. Silva's decision, and she apprised me, um, and gave me some really firsthand knowledge on just how much of an impact he's had, how, um, like a steady hand on the tiller he's been. And just how much he's contributed to the town over the 36 years of his very dedicated service. And I just, um, wanted to thank him. I mean, he is a man of few words, for sure. Um, but he is a great, a man of great action, um, and we appreciate it. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, Selectmen Goul- Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye, regretfully. Next, and I apologize, um, if you're still on, Ms. Ms. Dushkowsky, I should have read this under the previous item, so I will read it, uh, right now, and it's, this is from Wednesday, um, January 13th, 2021, at 4:11 PM, and this is from, um, your child. As a youth in Dayton, and, and Jen's child writes, as a youth in Dayton, I feel that it would be good to see a pride flag flying in Town Hall, because I think that kids will feel more welcome if they know that someone else is supporting them. There are some people that don't feel welcome or accepted. If they knew that there was someone going through the same stuff, maybe they would feel more welcome. Thank you very much. Please let, um, them know that we really appreciate them reaching out. Next, on our agenda this evening are acknowledgements, and I don't believe we have any. So, we can go to minutes if we don't have acknowledgements?
Mr. Chairman, may I just personally acknowledge? First of all, I want to acknowledge all of the town employees and residents who have, um, expressed condolences, have sent flowers and other types of, uh, remembrances. On behalf of my husband, I and the chief, fire chief, are overwhelmed with the contributions that have been made to the Dayton ambulance account. And my understanding is there are still contributions coming in. I'm, I'm totally overwhelmed, and I just want to personally thank everybody for the kindnesses that have been expressed to me and my son. And, uh, in honor and memory of my husband, uh, it's, it's just remarkable. Something came today to the house, um, and it's been, um, uh, almost a month since he passed. So, thank you very much, everybody. And I am in the process of writing notes. Um, I got so many notes to write, uh, but, um, I will make the time, because it's that important to us as a family. And the other thing I would say is, the Board of Selectmen, um, recorded a message before the end of the year. Um, and we were at the old Town Hall, and we recorded individual messages to the people of Dayton, recognizing, uh, and thanking them for all the support during this very difficult year. Um, when I started my, my, um, message, I initially thanked my family for support. I just want you to know, obviously, that message was for my husband and my son and other relatives. And by the time it was shown, uh, my husband had already passed, so, uh, but it was recorded earlier. And, but again, the sentiment that was expressed is, is, uh, true, and, uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Selectmen Goulart. So, I will, if the board is so amenable, entertain motions to accept for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of January 11th, 2021, and the regular meeting of January 13th, 2021.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And I will also entertain motions to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of December 16th, 2020.
So, um, I did not read the minutes. I made a mistake today. I cleaned my desk. Probably got rid of those minutes. So, I'm gonna have to ask. I know I was given a copy of it. I'm gonna have to ask for another copy of it.
We'll hold off? You want to hold off?
Yes, I, so I, because I know we want to get these minutes out as quickly as possible. I looked all over the place.
Well, this could be a sign. Maybe we were meant to, meant to hold on on this one. So, do you want to make a motion to take this one under advisement?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we, uh, take approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of December 16th, 2020, under advisement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Mrs. Brady, um, let's add this approval of these minutes onto the February 10th agenda, okay?
Yes, I have quite a few for that agenda.
I'm sorry.
No, okay, we'll, we'll dedicate a small portion of time to minutes. No worries. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Selectmen Goulart, you have the floor for approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 38-21 in the amount of $93,382.72 payroll. 30B-21 in the amount of $89,457.19. 30C-21 in the amount of $1,646.09. The last two being accounts payable be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, excuse me, Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Almost on time, 8:10 PM, second public input.
Bingo.
Anyone, if you have public input, please, uh, unmute yourself and just, uh, give us your name and your address. Hearing no public input, I will entertain, uh, a motion to enter into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Before we do that?
Yep.
Um, under Selectments and Reports, um, I just want to mention?
Yeah.
January 21 and 22 was the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Trade Show. I didn't get much out of the trade show, and there were no free samples.
Chachkes this time?
Nothing. Um, I will just mention, and I think, uh, Selectmen Pacheco went too. On Thursday, uh, we heard from Lieutenant Governor Polito. She's talking about new programs. Uh, Wes Moore was the keynote speaker. He was excellent. The women's elected, uh, officials, uh, it was Yvonne Spicer, the mayor of Framingham. Uh, and then on Friday, uh, the, the, um, and there were workshops in between that I went, um, but, to keep this brief, Governor Baker was the speaker at 1 o'clock. And also, um, Risha Grant, who was a writer and expert on diversity and inclusion. Uh, and I think it was Liz Walker that was with her. And the good thing is, these, uh, uh, presentations are available on the MMA website for 30 days. So, anyone who couldn't go or missed part of it, they can go on the website and see these presentations, so. It was a good conference, considering it was virtual. I couldn't imagine how this was going to come out, but I thought they did a great job.
Selectmen Pacheco, did you want to add anything?
No, I, I, I attended several of the, um, workshops, and each day, I heard, uh, Governor Baker, he spoke almost an hour, he took some questions. As well, so Lieutenant Governor, uh, Polito, so I thought it was a very good conference. I do prefer it to be in person. This is what's happened, so it was good.
Thank you.
One workshop I went to, and I've got to see Mr. Ferry about this, um, similar to mutual aid, like fire departments have, where, for example, if we had a big fire, uh, the chief would call into, I'll call it Central Dispatch for Bristol County, and they would dispatch, uh, dispatch, uh, whatever was needed for, uh, to fight the fire. The, um, State Association of Highway Superintendents, this is not Mass DOT, this is the superintendent. They're trying to set up something similar, where if there's an emergency in a community, and, um, let's say a tornado went through a certain area, you could call and say what the problem was, and they could dispatch heavy equipment, uh, things like that, under a mutual aid agreement. So, um, they're going to work with Mass DOT to try to come up with something. But I'm going to see if Mr. Becker is aware of this, because it sounds like something, uh, it would be beneficial to our town to get involved in.
Thank you, Selectmen Goulart. Did anyone? By the way, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know you had a, a report. Selectmen Goulart, I'm sorry, next time, just stop me if you, um, have anything under Selectmen's Reports. I didn't mean to.
No, no, I, I think we were just trying to fill some space when we were waiting, some time-space.
Sounds familiar. Yes, I recall that.
When we, we were waiting for, um, uh, somebody from Concom to come on the line.
So, with that, um, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Numbers 2 and 3, 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, update on performance evaluations. And also, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare. B, update police union matter, and C, update, I'm sorry, I'm reading them wrong. Give me one second. That's not, we, uh, updated the titles. Bear with me a second. It will be Number 3B, Update Police Union Litigation, and 3C, Update Fire Union Grievance Matter.
I so. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, sit, excuse me, roll call. Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also aye. Uh, everybody, have a wonderful evening. Uh, thank you so much for being patient, and have a, have a wonderful and safe night, and we'll catch you on February 10th.